Welcome. You're to grab that chair. The first item on the agenda tonight is the public hearing of 32 Pheasant Hill Run. A pension for a special permit, Anne W. Francesca. Is Anne?
Want us up there?
Yes. So, for this meeting, as most of you in this room know, I live at one Pheasant Hill Run. So, as in a butter to, not technically a butter to the property, I need to recuse myself from the public hearing. John Benson will run the meeting for this public hearing.
Good evening. You are, I'm sorry, your name again? Your name?
I'm W. Francesca.
Okay, and you have the petition for a special permit for the accessory apartment? Is that correct? Okay, we have your petition before us. Would you like to address the board?
I requested to have a special permit. Initially, I wanted to have a separate meter from upstairs and downstairs because I want to let my nephew live with me and I want to make him responsible for paying some bills. So, when I wanted to get a separate meter for the downstairs, I called an electrician who came to get a permit to get the meters separate and that's how I was given a notice that there was an apartment that had no permit.
The building, as it currently stands, has an apartment to it?
It's an in-law.
It's a split.
In-law apartment.
It's split with a, you know, a separate bathroom, you know, the family room and it's got, um, is there a picture of this? We have a picture? Yeah, right there. I think those guys have a picture. Right here.
So, this is, the basement has been turned into a...
So, were you under the assumption that this was already apartment, an apartment?
Yeah, I was not on the assumption because when I bought it, it was an in-law apartment. That's how it was sold us. When I bought the house, I bought it with an in-law apartment, like an accessory apartment. It was already there.
So, it was a split-level house?
Yes.
So, part of the sale there, it stated that there was an in-law apartment in the split-level? But it legally wasn't?
I believe you have to get a special permit every time you change the tenant. So, if they had it, it didn't matter. The next time somebody purchased it.
We have the building inspector here tonight?
Yeah, I'm here.
Does any member of the board have questions for the applicant?
Are you going to be, are you going to live in the house yourself?
Yes, that's what I do.
Who currently lives there?
Me.
Just you?
Yeah, just me.
Are there any entrances or anything?
They use the primary entrance and exit.
Well, it's a split, so you have your front entrance and you have a back entrance and you can go in through the garage.
No, accessory apartment, where's the entrance?
Probably through the garage.
And also, you can enter through the front door?
Well, through the back door too, right.
So, the traditional...
Exactly, yeah.
How much square footage is there, do you know?
Yes, I will tell you. Here's the field car right there. This is where, um...
No, thanks.
Yeah, but this is, he wants to, oh, for a particular, oh, yeah. I'm sorry to know.
Just for the apartment?
Just for the apartment, $6.25.
Because it can't be great outside of it and there's only, can only be one bedroom.
Is there any additional construction being done?
No.
Are there three parking spaces that will be used in the time? Do you have subject, does she have subject?
Sure.
Sure. Okay, did, is she providing a notarized letter that she will occupy one of the dwelling units on the premises?
I was asked, yeah, as a...
What you're looking for?
Yeah, I know. When she bought the house, was she said, well, it was...
Well, it wasn't, I think it wasn't, I think it was, I think it foreclosed and then it got listed. Yeah, it has been vacant for a long time, I think. The neighbors might know. I can't remember, but I think I went to a foreclosure auction.
So, the question is, you know, if it is an in-law apartment, the earlier owner, I don't know, anyone lived there?
May or may not have had a permit. I don't know if they had a permit. Some of the neighbors here, they might know.
That should have come up when you purchased it, um, here, when the...
Well, she didn't buy it exclusively for an in-law.
It doesn't matter if it was, this has to be recorded in the registry of deeds. So, when you did this, your attorney, who would have done a title search and that should have come up in a title search.
Yeah, I don't know if it did because it wasn't even anyone was really looking for. But even if it did, wouldn't you have to get a re-permit?
Yes, but it would be apparent to the attorney, to the attorney who was handling the transaction, that there was a, it was on the title because it would have been recorded.
I think it was, I think the house was vacant for a really long time.
Can I ask the building, the building, was, was there any, was there any kind of building, it says here that, you know, that the permit holder shall notify the buildings by 30 days of the sale or transfer. Did you know, did you look back to see if there was any kind of a special permit that was issued beforehand?
So, there's, there's no special permit on the, the structure beforehand. Based on the material presented and the types of products used in the construction, you can date the work in that area back to like the 80s. There's a statute of limitations on enforcement for construction. That's 10 years if the work's done without a permit. Six years if it was done with a permit. So, in this particular case, that, that apartment, what, how it was built in its previous history, it's gone past the timeframe where a building inspector can enforce some sort of action. So, we have a pre-existing apartment. The only thing I might suggest is conditional upon the special permit is an opportunity to do a walkthrough for life safety to confirm the veteran has an emergency escape, you know, if, if the special permit is granted.
Hold on, hold on.
Shouldn't you have an inspector, the, 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 the apartment? So, you don't know if any of that, what you just said, you don't know if any of that is...
All right, all right. We have somebody speaking. If everyone could quiet down, please.
You don't know if any of that's applicable, what you just said about safety and all of that.
So, for life, yes, for life safety, I couldn't tell you the existing conditions because I have not been in there. Under existing building code, per the Mass Amendments, what the building inspector does is he assesses the pre-existing conditions for, for risk to, to life. And if, even if that was, however it was built, if they didn't have a perfectly conforming set of stairs, for example, which is what we see in a lot of old homes, we don't make them rip the stairs out and build them back to current code. We assess the risk and if there's something that, that's of grave danger to life and then like no window in a bedroom down inside a basement, then yes, they would be issued in order to correct.
Does it have to be one of those exit windows that essentially can climb out or is a, you kind of know what the standard size for a window is, but...
An emergency escape, the rest of your opening is 40, no more than 44 inches off the floor and has a clear opening when you actually open the window of 20 inches by 24 inches in either direction.
So, most, typical double-hung window, is that going to comply with that?
It would, it would. In the photographs, if you look at, um, the photograph that has, um, the upper photograph on the page that has all three with the bathroom vanity, looks like we have a double-hung window there.
I'm guessing it's that there. I can't really make it out from this. From the right, right-hand side.
Yeah, that top, that top one, that's the bedroom, correct, Anne?
Yes.
So, the, the window on the right, per the photo, seems like it conforms. If that is the bedroom, I mean, I see a, I think a fireplace in there, so it's a little unique, but that would be my job to confirm as part of the condition for the special permit would be to go out and assess that we have a good primary egress out of that space and then we have a good, safe dwelling unit.
I have a question. When did you buy it? Did you know the prior room?
No.
I'm pretty sure the house was booked. And, um, I think I had gone to the auction for the house and then it went to, you know, got listed. And I keep it vacant for a long time. Actually, you guys might know this, wasn't that house vacant for a long time? Wasn't that the house that was vacant for a long time? I think I went to the foreclosure auction.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, but I didn't talk to you. But wasn't that house vacant for a long time? Didn't people move to Florida or something and how long do you think, with the whole thing we committed? Yeah, how long do you think it was vacant? I don't know.
15 years, probably.
15 years, so it was vacant for 15 years.
Well, it was always one family that was living there. The tenants had been the, the years and years and years that built the house. It was one family, two girls, one son, they were the only ones living there. It was a one-family house.
So, they must have put that thing in the basement, though.
Well, at one point, her husband was ill and she set up downstairs so that her husband could get in and out of the house. But it was nobody's pocket that was for him to live in, so he could, didn't have to deal with the stairs.
Every split, every split entry home on Pheasant Hill has a finished basement. Everyone. And Tom was in the wheelchair, so basically downstairs... But it was a single...
Thank you.
How many people do, are going to occupy this?
It would be me and my nephew.
Your nephew?
Yes.
How old is your nephew?
He's 22.
Say that falls under... They determine if the dwelling conforms to state building code regulations, 3.4 F1. I'm going to open this up to public comment. Is there anything else you wanted to add before I open it up for...
Before then, I have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the building inspector?
Certainly.
Without inspecting, how can you tell the materials and the other things that are pre-dated for the 20 years back?
We look at stuff like the, what they call Marlight, which is a product that was used on, on the walls. It's not used anymore.
But you have to go there and visit the apartment, right?
So, that would be, it can, yes, that would be a request.
But we have not done it.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm asking for a review of the apartment, not to judge that its, its construction is younger than 10 years. I'm doing that for a life safety check for the occupant that would potentially be in a bedroom or any other space that they can safely get out of the facility. Do we have smoke detectors? That kind of a check. On the photographs, Regash, I can tell you, based on the style of countertops, the style of sink, the materials used on the walls, we can date the construction based on that having been in the industry for 30 years.
No, my concern is that, you know, they could have divided the wall, put the wall in time, right? To make an apartment.
I'm not following your question.
To make, to make an apartment, you know, even after, very recently, they made up the wall. So, they didn't have the building permit to make an apartment?
So, the, they had, there was no building permit of record for a finishing off of that basement. And the member from the audience just said that that was done back when a previous owner was ill in, was, was done so that they could stay down in a lower level at, at ground floor with the garage so that they didn't have to go up and downstairs.
But normally, you know, the split levels are, as he said, are all finished places, right, please?
No, split levels don't have to have the basement finished. In that particular neighborhood, it sounds like a lot of the basements are finished, but the level of finish, is it a rec room? Is it a bathroom, kitchen, rec room? The style of finishing is not dictated.
Is there, um, does, you said it was your nephew? I'm sorry, your nephew?
Yes.
Does he have, one of the considerations is for disabled individual? Does he have any disability that is applicable here?
No, he doesn't have disability.
If, if he was disabled, he would not be downstairs, he would leave upstairs area.
Okay, I, I only ask because that's one of the criteria. Or a consideration, I...
Anybody else have anything else for the applicant? And about the car parkings, parking space?
What is the driveway like? How many spaces are on the driveway?
It's a big, long driveway. It can fit more than five cars.
Here's, you can't really see that well in this picture, but you come in this way and there's two car doors, it kind of swings around.
So, are there any kind of rules? I don't see anything for the accessory apartment, but for housing in general, if it's a single bedroom apartment, um, that would limit to the number of people? So, as a single-bedroom apartment, I suppose one concern would be that someone tried to cram four or five people into that. Not saying that's the case here, but just as a general proposition, neighbors may have a concern about the number of people that would be housed in an accessory apartment. Being that this is a single bedroom, is there any kind of a rule that would be on point there?
Yeah, so, under the building code, and I believe the Sanitation Code follows the same ruling, every 200 square feet of gross living space equals an occupant. So, in this case, where we have 650 square feet down that basement, you're looking at three, three and a half, which would be, uh, you could have four occupants. The purpose...
You, you round up?
You do round up, yes.
But you're not, you're, if it's 650 and it can't be higher than 700, you're not getting, you're not getting more than halfway to 800. So, if it's 200 square feet per person, so you can't round up to the fourth, can you?
You're correct, yeah.
Okay, so, three would be the maximum people, the number that could be allowed in this?
That'd be the maximum number, yeah. And if I put my zoning hat on here for a second.
By all means.
The purpose of, of an accessory apartment is not just for elderly folks or folks that are, have health issues. For example, purpose number two is just making housing units available to moderate-income households who might otherwise have difficulty finding homes in town. And then, more so, number five, legalize conversions to encourage the town to monitor conversions for code compliance. This town has a lot of accessory apartments. We just saw one today in a different case, yet I don't know that the standards have been followed in town as far as filing a declaration of covenants and putting it on record with the registry of deeds. So, with this apartment, the, the purpose is, is very broad and it's to encourage all forms of, of, you know, folks with income issues to, to establish homes in the town, but yet keep the, the single-family character and nature of the building.
So, when she, when the special permit is, is issued, then she has to do a declaration of covenant, covenants?
Yeah.
Now, do you can get a copy of that or does it just go to the registry of deeds, registry of deeds?
I would, the, the zoning board of appeals should be getting a recorded copy of that declaration of covenants from the registry of deed with the registered barcode on it when Anne would submit that. I would also request a copy so I can keep it in the building jacket in my office. That also, too, now puts anyone unnoticed, attorneys, realtors, all, all sorts of folks that if that changed, transfers title again, that, that has to be, they understand what that declaration of covenants means. Without that recorded, you don't have any recognition of a, of a true accessory apartment there. And it's temporary. It, it, it loses its status when you, when you transfer a title. And the new occupant would have to go through the process again.
Because the house was empty for 15 years before she bought it, okay? And now looking at an accessory apartment and because of the age and stuff, and I'm just curious, I mean, it's not that it's a big thing, I'm just curious, as the building inspector, when she applied, you know, I'm just curious why you didn't go down to check to see if everything was up to the building code and to see if the safety, you know, and the regress and everything was okay so that when we came here, you could just tell us so that we could just, because now, from what I, from what I'm reading, we would have to issue the special permit under the condition of your inspection. And if it doesn't meet your inspection, then she can't get the special permit until, until whatever you say needs to be done?
My inspection would merely be, she would not be able to have her nephew occupy that space until it, it met life safety standards. So, the special permit can still be issued with that condition so that I, I feel verifying that life safety. And then, once that's, that, the corrections are approved, if there's any required, then they can occupy that space.
So, you're distinguishing between special permit, you're requested here, and occupancy permit to be issued after your...
No, again, it's, it would be a, not necess, it would be more of a certificate of compliance if a window had to get changed versus an occupancy permit on the whole entire space.
So, you're suggesting that if we were to approve it, it would be upon the condition that it be, you examine the apartment and determine that it meets health and safety? I don't know if the code would be the correct term, but health, health and safe, I'm going to say code for lack of a better term. Health and safety codes and the permit won't be issued until you determine it's in compliance?
I, yeah, so I would do that, that inspection and then the special permit, you know, you folks would be signing the special permit.
Right.
At the next meeting. So, I'd confirm by that point that, that there's no issues.
Anybody else have anything for, we take public comment? Okay, opening up for public comment, yes?
Thank you, Chairman Benson. What I wanted to comment on was that the burden is on the applicant in our formal reviews on the CBA to pass the accessory apartment. We have a very difficult bylaw to pass because we have rose square footage, 700 feet. This does pass that, that's a good thing, but it's my understanding that this is an initial review, that this has never been before ZBA in my past 12 years, so that this is a new review and that we shouldn't give any credence to whatever may have been there in the past and that the applicant should have brought everything they needed before you. I, I don't know how you would vote on this, whether you would make a contingent upon Chris's inspection or why, but with all due respect to the applicant and the board, it, it would be reasonable to, you know, take into consideration that what Chris can inspect and that whatever this kitchen is, I, I just had a little glance at it, it's the kitchen that's the most complex component of this. And whether the oven and the appliances have the adequate... And whether the oven and the appliances have the adequate, um, wiring behind the walls and the amperage, which needs to be kind of inspected before the walls are closed up, so that would be, you know, I think the biggest concern with this isn't the one bedroom or the square footage, or the accessibility, that all seems to be compliant. I think one of the concerns would be the public safety and the, um, issues with the kitchen appliances, which require different electrical components than your average plug-in appliance, and that is what might be difficult to inspect, because the walls-
I think we'll leave what's difficult to inspect to the building inspector.
Okay, um, but to approve it based on what he can see with the walls closed up, I think is a little bit, um, ahead of what the applicant should bring, be bringing for you at this time.
Well, that's the building inspector, um, outlets are, whether this was a new, uh, to be accessory apartment or simply a finished basement, I assume the outlets are generally, uh, behind closed walls, so that, which is kind of how things are in most houses, is it not?
Yeah, and, and I'll reiterate, as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, the 10-year statute of limitations is up. There isn't, we don't open walls back up, we don't inspect walls, it, it, it no longer, there's no longer an act of enforcement on any of that construction. It was being utilized right along by a previous owner, it, it, we look at more, uh, smoke detectors, egress path, that sort of thing at this point.
Are there any, um, there, there's a reference to a dishwasher in there, does the dishwasher have any special, um, would there be any special consideration for you if this was, say this was brand-new construction with regard to a dishwasher, do those have different, you know, is that a 220 line or something, or?
Dishwashers, no, no, they're not 220, and they plug into the drain line of the kitchen sink, so it's, 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 uh, barely low-impact type of appliance when it comes to construction.
Okay, how about the stove?
Stoves, plug, plug and play on the stove, so it can't, um-
Is that a 220 line?
If it's an electric stove, it would be 220, um, do you have an electric stove in the-
No, electric stove.
As far as the plug, you can actually see, if you pull, pull the stove back, you can see the-
Yeah, yeah, I'll look at the general cond- condition of everything, I make sure there's no open covers, those kinds of things, but we don't go through and with, with a slew of inspectors and try to bring this apartment up to today's code, it just doesn't work that way.
Anybody else have anything, or did you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
No. If this is-
If you could identify yourself, so Toby could-
Louise Hashway, on the phone, Desenhill.
Thank you.
Um, sent them.
Sorry.
Louise Hashway, on the phone, Desenhill, thank you. I have a question, though, um, first, I can't get my mind around the fact that it was sold with quote an apartment, which it wasn't, it would end up, you know, can, can that be addressed? Because it was not an apartment.
It, it's really not an issue, because the fact, whether or not it existed beforehand, it would, there would have to be a new application for special permit. So, there's no grandfathering in, because it was once before, we're going to say, well, it's already been that way, therefore it continues that way. It has to be a new application, which we have in front of us, so the fact that it may or may not have been a, uh, a, used in that matter before is, is kind of irrelevant, because there has to be a new application for a special permit.
Now, if there's been work done downstairs in the core apartment, that work has been done, what happens if she's put all this work into it and it, and it doesn't pass? And would she have put the coppers for the course?
Well, it's-
In terms of assuming that it could be an apartment, and it's not?
It, it, it doesn't sound like she actually did that, that she fell in on this, but, uh, we'll ask the building inspector, since that's his-
Yeah, what, what would happen is, 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 uh, the accessory apartment is viewed as a second dwelling, even though it's accessory to the, to the primary, in the definition of a dwelling, if you have the ability to cook, prepare food, sanitation, so bathroom, living space and sleeping space. We would, if, if the accessory apartment was not approved, we would request that the stove be removed, so that it becomes more of a wet bar, uh, wrecked area, and that would be, and then it goes back to being a single dwelling, it doesn't have automations of two dwellings.
Okay.
And if this is approved as an apartment, does that mean that the gentleman who plans to reside there can move out and somebody else can rent it?
That is not my read of this, and I think if it were to be approved, I think that would be a condition, but the owner of the pres, the, per the bylaw, the owner, and I'm citing 3.4 G1, the owner of the premises shall occupy one of the dwelling units except for bona fide temporary absence. Does that answer the question?
It does.
Sir?
John Palladino, from 26 Pheasant Hill Run.
Yes, sir.
Two egresses there, are there two egresses?
Uh, it would appear to me that it's the front door and through the garage, but I'm not going to answer that question, I'll leave it to you.
Yes, there are two, one from the, one from the front door and from the garage, so you can come through the front door, go down, that's an egression, you can go through the garage to inside the second egression.
Jim Palladino, on the Pheasant Hill Run, these houses are designed so that front door is completely open for you, so that front door is being an egress, not separate from the other unit. So I don't see how that could be considered unless they decided to completely wall it off and make it a common area.
Well, um, that would be one egress, it sounds like the garage, this is attached to the garage, which would be another egress. But I think that, you know, that raises a question as, I'll get few.
So that, this isn't a two-family, it's an accessory apartment, and in a, uh, in this, with the primary egress on a split, there is language in the Mass Amendments where that's allowed. You can have egress down as well as up using that same front entrance.
Does that separate them what's in the bylaws, there's a Mass Code on point on this?
There is a Mass Amendment regarding egress on a split, um, and again-
Is that egress specific to accessory apartments, or just in general egress for building code?
The, the, the Mass Amendment regarding building code to the current edition that we're following, eighth edition, you have to have two forms of egress, okay? Again, with, with a pre-existing non-conforming, and without a building permit, we go in and we assess life safety risk, okay? And if that shows itself to be, uh, what the building inspector considers a viable form of egress out of the, the lower apartment, uh, as well as through the garage, which is not how we do it today, but if that existing condition is not a threat, and, and then it would be allowed.
Yes?
It seems as though we're giving the, um, applicant the benefit of not coming before the board previous to this, and we're grandfathering things that should have been, that are okay back then, when technically today's the first time that we're reviewing-
What is it you think is being grandfathered?
Well, I think that Chris just said that, you know, should it have been back then, there should have been two, um, entrances, but given the fact that it was 10 years ago, you know-
Well, I don't think he said there should have been two entrances, I think what he said was, any construct, and correct me if I'm wrong, but any kind of construction or remodeling that's more than 10 years old, irrespective of whether it's an accessory apartment, is not, uh, reviewable. Am I misstating what you're-
Okay, that's correct, but any of those issues that we were reviewing as of the present day, he's saying, because it existed 10 years ago, we can't, you know, really applying or holding accountable for what today's standards are.
So you suggest-
Yeah?
Please.
I don't think that's what he's saying at all, I, I think that there are rules for the special permit, and nothing is being grandfathered under those rules. We're looking at each and every criterion and seeing if it's met. As far as building inspection or, or, uh, enforcement action, that's foreclosed by the statute of limitations. That's what I understand the building inspector to be saying, is, is, he, he can't independently go, I'm gonna go inspect this and ding you for these things that aren't up to the current code. That's what's prohibited, but as far as the requirements of the special permit, we're looking at each and every one.
As they were in place today, when he goes to do the inspection.
Well, I, I think, perhaps we're, we're-
I don't know, maybe I'm confused.
-confusing some, some things here, um, regardless of whether or not this is a, an application for an accessory apartment, the building as it exists today, doesn't matter if that we're here for an accessory apartment, if anything that was done in that building more than 10 years ago, um, is not reviewable, is that?
Correct.
Um, so, any building anywhere, any home, anywhere in West Boylston, that is more than 10 years old, if they, somebody seeks to have an accessory apartment, what's already done would not be reviewable, correct?
Correct, with the exception of life safety.
With, with exception of life safety, thank you, but any, so as far as any electrical that's already in place, um, there would be no reviewing?
Correct, we look at, at, you know, breakers and, and cover plates, those kinds of things, but we don't open up outlets and check the gauge wire, those kinds of things. It, it's, that's what's not reviewable anymore, enforceable anymore.
But that's nothing, it's not connected to being accessory apartment, that's just everything.
Correct, everything.
And so, uh-
Give us other comments.
I'm sorry, well, I was actually gonna follow up with, uh, hold on, I was following, it is, go. Sort of, to follow up on, on what you were saying, you're concerned that there's some sort of grandfathering in, and that the applicant has some sort of burden to come forward with something prior to today, and I'd like to better understand what your concern is in light of what the building inspector has told us, that any building in town that has got work done on it that's older than 10 years is not subject to inspection. So we have an applicant who has a building that's older than 10 years old, who has come before us, what is it that you think the applicant should have done before coming before us today that they, that the applicant has not done?
Well, I think that's a very liberal way of reviewing the bylaw, and, and we've always grappled with this bylaw, and we've not approved, if any, of these accessory apartments, because so few meet the criteria.
Okay, well, which criteria do you think it doesn't meet?
Well, I, I thought that the applicant usually had to prove the burden that when they were putting the accessory apartment in place, um, it met all of that criteria.
Can you cite me a part of the cri, you, you said you've concerned that it's not meeting a criteria, can you cite me one of the criteria that it's not meeting?
Well, when the kitchen is put in place, usually, you know, the building inspector has to be part of that, they have to, oh, we had an accessory apartment in town in one of our other houses, and when we were building it, we had the actual building inspector reviewing it, just like the original kitchen, the wiring behind the walls, before we closed them off, the extra appliances, all of the criteria had to be met, and we had a separate building permit for it.
But that's not one of the criteria in here, is it?
Um, well, it seems as though it's grandfathered because-
Well, no, I'm looking at the criteria for an accessory apartment, and I'm wondering if there is a specific criteria you want to bring the, to our attention.
It looks like the kitchen was put in the bathroom.
Well, that's, again, my question is, under Rule 3.0, 3.4, is there a criteria that you think is not being followed? Because that would certainly be highly relevant if something under 3.4 is not being followed.
I, I hear you, and I, it does meet the 900 square foot criteria.
Seven.
700, excuse me, and the one bedroom, and I, I do believe that those criterias are met. I, I thought what was a little bit concerning was the kitchen and its placement, it looks like it's right next to the shower, or it's in the bathroom, or-
No.
It's a separate room.
Correct.
I think the pictures are just next to each other, I don't-
Excuse me, may I add a comment about the one bedroom?
Certainly, sir.
I own a house that has a room in the lower level.
One second, sir, Toby, did you get his name previously?
Jim Palladino.
I wasn't with you.
Okay, sorry, please go ahead, sir.
So I own a house that meets the same kind of layout with a room that would be considered a bedroom on the lower level, has a door, has three windows, has a closet, however, when I recently had it appraised for an equity line by a bank, none of the lower level's square footage is considered as living space, and the bedroom is not considered as living space. So I don't understand how it meets the criteria if banks and realtors, as they listed in previous houses on the neighborhood, don't ever list this, because it's not considered living space.
I don't think that has anything to do with-
Yeah, and I, I can't speak to how a bank views it, um, I think what's real-
I'm not saying that banks and realtors don't count it as living space, how can it be counted as living space under section 3.4?
Well, I, as far as whether or not it's living space, I don't see anything here that says whether a bank or a realtor views it that way, I'm gonna, it's whether or not the building inspector views it that way. I think is, you know, banks could do what banks like to do.
Yeah, I'll comment on that, uh, appraisers have absolutely no authority in this world at all to judge whether something's livable or not. To their rules, as far as doing bank appraisals, they have some funky, uh, rules they use. I'll give you another example, if you own a cake and you have a slanted ceiling, it's not counted living space. It has no bearing in the, in the world of construction or the mass state building code. We judge living space based on ceiling height, natural light, uh, egress, uh, size of room, per the way the room is being used, and I'm the authority on all that.
I'm sorry, could you state your name?
One Pheasant Hill Run, so, bringing up, that's a great point, Chris, so you had called the building inspector, well, not the building inspector, actually, you didn't call them, you called electrician.
Yes.
Because you had previously actually been renting this property out to other people, this isn't the first tenant, there's been other people living there, um, so you were looking to move services and split it up to have your own electric meter, so actually, to the building inspector's point, the moment you did that, you actually had to do work on the premises to move the electrical around, because it is a single-family home, and that wasn't an apartment. So the moment you did that work, under any bylaws, you've now started work to change the electrical way the, the building's actually structured. The building also didn't come with a stove or refrigerator, because those weren't in the building when you purchased it, knowing this, because-
They were, they were.
So when I walked through the building, it didn't have that, and that was-
They were.
During that time.
I think one of them-
So to move the electrical and split the floors up so that only the electric for the upstairs counts on one meter and the other, you actually have to do work, so, Chris can say use the enforcement on it, but the moment you touch one of those walls, all of the predated work that was done around the house no longer is relevant, because the moment you touch the electrical or try to move anything in those walls, that does have to be inspected by, not you, a light inspector, which you are not the enforcement for that, so she did move those, and under that, it would be someone with that background to do that. So I just want to make it very clear that that does say it's 700 square feet, but the moment you open one of those up or move services, you now have done work on a house you do not have a permit with, and in the past had no permit for.
Wait, wait, hold on.
Yeah?
So, you're doing work on a house that has been currently being rented prior to moving meters, the moment you moved and changed and started doing work in your house, even though people couldn't see it, you started making modifications without a permit to build an apartment and separate electric, so you can't, you can't exactly do that and then say, well, they wouldn't give me another meter, but I did no work to move the electric.
My first question is, was any work done?
No, because, um, down, it's here, the, when I bought the house, an inspector comes, and the inspector-
Let me just stop, maybe just simplify this, you bought the house in 2004?
Yeah, 2000, 2012.
2012, okay, since you bought the house in 2012, have you had any electrical work done on the house?
No.
So you have not-
The only thing that was done was, on my house, was the sensor motion lights, and the garage door, and the garage door. The garage door was, were changed, and I think that there are people who put the- The garage doors were changed, and I think that there are people who put the garage door, the overhead door, got a meter. That's what was done. The electrical, no electrical work was done in that apartment.
Okay.
I have not rented it. What happened is that initially, when I moved in, because it's a big house on Amalou, my niece, who got married and moved, used to live with me, and she used to live upstairs. Later on, one of the individuals, I work with mentor, mentor developed individuals, needed a placement to stay, to help. So I lived with one of the ladies, who is from a company called Paula's, upstairs, but she moved to Florida, to her mother. So I had not rented it, and everything that is there was there.
Okay.
I've not touched anything, and to my request, I would ask a certified electrician to come. They can know if anything was touched.
Okay.
Because anything that has been done, like for the overdose, the sensor motion, I have everything on the receipts.
Okay, so that all concerned residents here, all of them...
I can, I can open just that.
There was, the meter has not been installed at this point?
No.
And you've not had any electrical work done?
No, except the sensor motion.
Okay.
The outside lights.
Okay, let's stop there, so we can take a step-by-step.
Yes.
You have had an electrician put in motion sensor lights on your house?
Motion, yes, those ones, yes.
Okay, where are those located?
Outside the garage and on the side of the, what do we call it, the kitchen, the den.
Okay, so exterior lighting.
Exterior.
Were there lights there previously?
Yes, the, outside the garage, there are two lights.
So you converted existing lights into motion sensor lights, is that what you're saying?
Another one was, just one was added.
Okay. So, okay, so that covers one electrical change. You mentioned something about a garage?
Yes, the over door, the garage doors, the overhead, the doors, because the, it was getting in, it was getting cold, so the doors, the garage doors were changed by the overhead.
You replaced the garage doors?
Yes.
But that wasn't, wasn't anything electrical, was it?
I think...
Do you have the door openers?
Yes, I have the...
Did you have them previously? When you bought the house, were there electric door openers there?
No.
So when you had, when the garage door opener, when the garage doors were changed, you had electric garage door openers installed?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So the two changes that have been made to the house were the exterior lights, you had one added, and the others were converted from just regular exterior lights to motion sensor lights.
Yeah, to motion sensor.
So the fixtures were changed.
Yeah.
You had your garage doors replaced, and at the time of replacement, you had garage door openers installed?
Yes.
Okay. Was there any, have there been any other changes?
No.
Okay. I completely cut you off, Chris, so...
So I was gonna state that in order to split circuits off of a main panel and have a separate circuit tied, a separate panel tied into a meter, none of that work involved rewiring any of the existing structure, and all be done at the home runs. Darren from Municipal Light Plant was the gentleman that was asked to come out and add the separate meter. The wiring inspector was involved in that as well, and that's what prompted discussion about the accessory apartment.
So, basically, and electrician was retained for this, when looking at it, they said, "Hey, you're gonna do this, you probably need to get a permit first," and then works didn't begin because this issue arose.
Correct.
Yes, sir?
Right. My comment in general?
You may comment.
I'd like to take a stroll.
Specific or general?
A little bit. I don't know exactly what the criteria for the special permit is, but it does seem like there's a huge compelling reason to get, bypass the single-family resident zoning in the area. I mean, that's my point that I want to make. There's, I think there's four points that were made. Chris made a good point about if you made the special permit, then there's a note in the title that says that there was an accessory apartment at some point, it will dissolve at the next sale. And, I mean, that's nice to know, but I don't know, I need a little more understanding of the value of that. But anyways.
The primary value is the next buyer doesn't get the benefit.
Doesn't get the benefit, but they know that it was there. I mean, I don't know if that...
But they would then, per the bylaw, if they wanted to use it as an accessory apartment, they would have to come back to the board and ask again.
Exactly, but they could do that anyways. I mean, whether it's or not.
They would not, they would not buy and just sort of walk into, "Hey, I bought an house with an accessory apartment, I'm going to immediately use it as such."
Right, and, exactly, and then they couldn't, and so I don't know the exact value, but anyways, that's one.
Okay.
I was considering that a process, but anyway.
Okay.
There's another one, which was, the whole point of this was to allow the second tenant or whatever, accessory apartment tenant to have their own electric meter. I don't know if that's...
Doesn't say anything in the bylaw about that, that I don't notice.
It doesn't seem that compelling to me to say, "Okay, you get the whole special permit," because there's two more risks. One risk is that, you know, I assume that everybody here is just neighbors, and they have one person living, one family living in their house, and to sort of step aside and say, "All right, this one house wants to now be a two-family or whatever, accessory apartment," just so that the person can have their own electric meter, doesn't seem compelling enough for me to compromise what all these people have bought into in the neighborhood. But, I mean, that's just, that's your decision to make, I guess. But that, that's one, it doesn't seem like a good enough reason, I guess, so that they can have their own light, electric meter. And then the fourth one...
Wait, I think you only made two points.
No, the first point was...
Go ahead.
The title record. Second point was, get the meter. Third point was, oh, third point is any meter, any tenant after this could move in, and that's sort of the risk. You know, I mean, you don't know who's gonna, I mean, I'm sure she's gonna screen her tenants or whatever she's gonna do, but by issuing the special permit, you sort of open it up to anything, because you don't, you don't screen the tenants, you don't know who's gonna move in. And then the other one was, and this is one that is sort of personal to me, is that there's no actual second or separation between the primary and secondary residents. So if she were to rent to somebody that, or anybody were to rent to somebody in this place, that person has free range over the whole place, and, I don't know, I don't like that in general. I mean, I would...
Do you know, why, why don't you like that in general?
Oh, because I wouldn't do that. I guess that's why.
Okay.
I mean, because that means you're renting to somebody who has free range to walk into your living space anytime, and I understand it's a relative's...
Well, you could put a, you could put a door at the bottom of the stairs.
She could, but she doesn't, it's not there, and you're gonna approve the special permit for an accessory permit, this does not happen.
We could say, put a door at the bottom of the stairs.
But I wouldn't, and I would just say...
There would be a block of fireworks.
No, there would still be a door, you just, you open the door and hang out.
I didn't mean to cause any more construction problems.
I've seen many, many a split level where at the bottom of that staircase, there's some kind of door.
My whole thing in general was that it doesn't seem like a compelling, I mean, other CBA decisions are, the applicant has to show hardship or something. I know this is, this is a special permit, it's a little bit different, but it doesn't seem like this is going the right way. I mean, I respect the right to do it and everything like that, but, I mean, I like the other reason for accessory apartments, which is when you have a person who's growing, whose family has all moved away, and they have a house that's huge, and they say, "Well, I want my, I wanna have my own place, but I want the house still, so I'll have the family that I get moving," or whatever.
Well...
And then they cordon them off, so there's a in-law apartment in the house.
You add that if I would like to...
I mean, that's the, that's what I think this is, the bylaw is for.
Well, I partly agree with you. I mean, it's certainly for that purpose, which actually is kind of what's being, this is a relative who's going in, but as the building inspector pointed out, under 3.4B2, B is the purpose of the accessory apartment by, by law, R2, so whoever wrote those bylaws, I don't know who writes the bylaws in this town, but this is make, I was being facetious. Make housing units available to moderate-income households who might otherwise have difficult finding homes.
Right, no, this is your decision to make, not my decision.
I was just saying that that's, whoever wrote the bylaw, wrote that into the bylaw.
Yeah, and I think that that was leading...
I didn't write the bylaw.
An in-law, where there's a woman who's, or a man, or somebody who's on a fixed income, and they have this enormous house that has a lot of taxes, and they say, "I can't afford it, and I have to move out." But no, I can make myself an in-law apartment and have my family here, and we'll split the cost of the taxes, and that's the point, not to make duplexes and single-family residences so that people can rent to anybody that...
Well, I think the, the question about the duplexes is...
It's the first time this has happened.
A little decorum, please. The concern about the duplexes, though, does, it is addressed in the bylaw, because, as it says, "The accessory apartment shall be designed so that the appearance of the building remains that of one family residence," which would be different from a duplex.
It's fit that 100%, but I mean, that's what they're all supposed to do. I mean, it's not supposed to look like, I was calling it a duplex, because there's two families.
No, I understand, but to these, go ahead.
Responding further. And yes, I see you, and I want you to be called on. Make sure she gets called on. To respond further, the use that you've described is the use that's being done, it's a family member who's moving in. The risk that you described of, well, after that, anybody can move in, is the same risk.
So we write the bylaw later, okay.
But I'm saying, so this is squarely within, but it's even, it's not just squarely within the bylaw, it's squarely within the issue you raised.
This is your decision to make.
I'm pointing out that the same, the same risk of grandpa having a grandchild live there, and then, oh, grandchild moved out, so, you know, Fred from the next town is gonna move in. It's the same thing. This is absolutely no different than the illustration you made.
This comes up every single time, an accessory apartment for an in-law comes up, probably.
Probably.
Maybe we, maybe the point that you should, maybe we should talk about also, is that all these people should also come to the bylaw meetings, when we talk about rewriting bylaws and all this kind of stuff, and we'll fix all these bylaws that have new issues.
Yes, I think whoever writes the bylaws should definitely be concerned about those things.
It's too late for this kind of meeting, but...
Only there was somebody on the bylaw committee here.
Ma'am.
Okay, thank you. You can stand up if you want to. I'm in front of 28 Pheasant Hill. So what I can appreciate the fact that, you know, she wants her nephew to live in the home, and she wants him to be responsible for his share, figure that out, you know, however you want to do it. But I think creating an ordinance to change it, to put it, you know, so that it can become an apartment, and then he moves out, and someone's gonna police when he moves out, who else moves back in? I think we're all here, because we bought homes in a single-family neighborhood, because that's where we wanted to live. And we don't want it to become a muckle, and it's, it's nothing personal, but Pheasant Hill is a very nice family neighborhood of single-family homes, and that's the way we want it to stay.
Chris, is there really preventing someone under the bylaws? This dwelling currently has the stove and refrigerator, I suppose bathrooms are pretty common down in the basement, so the stove, sink, and refrigerator seem to be the real defining aspects of turning a basement into a, an accessory apartment. Is there anything in the bylaw that would require an individual to take that out?
No.
So if we were to say, "No, you can't have an accessory apartment," what would be the enforcement mechanism for somebody in this situation, say, "All right, I respect that you can't do that, my nephew's moving in with me"?
I take that back. The issue is, if an accessory apartment is denied, then the, having two dwelling units there, two spaces within that structure that are considered separate dwelling units, that would become an issue for zoning. Then that, and it brings me back to the, the fact that a stove would have asked to be removed to turn that, or what, I mean, in what part?
Just playing devil's advocate, if I owned a, a split-level home, split-level homes are very hard to give you up the space, so I would say it's not a separate space, it's one wide-open space that, as was pointed out, there is no separate entrance to this, the stairway, if it doesn't have a door, you know, an open-concept home, how would you, how would you, as the building inspector, determine that it is in fact a separate living space?
Has it, for me, addressed to the front entrance, sleeping, living, sanitation, cooking?
Well, as to the front entrance, that's the nature of a split level, both the upstairs and downstairs has access to that, so that's nothing unique about this, that's the nature of a split-level home. So I don't know that...
Irregardless of door, no door, at the bottom of the stairs, because it has no bearing on this bylaw.
Okay, so, go ahead.
It sounds like it turns on cooking. It sounds, it sounds like this in particular turns on cooking. If you think, if there's no special permit, you can't have a stove there.
And that's the easiest remedy. I mean, obviously, you could remove a bathroom down there, and now I don't have a second dwelling. I could remove the bedroom, but the easiest thing is to not have the ability to pair food, and that's how we do, eliminate the second dwelling.
So what you would say is, you do not have a permit for two dwellings, this is a dwelling, you have to get rid of one?
Correct.
Which could be accomplished by...
However you get rid of it, you have to get rid of one.
That, correct. Again, as zoning informs, this bylaw is granted via special permit, not variance. So special permit is as long as we meet the conditions and safeguards as required by the bylaw.
Chuck Craig, is this one of those shall issue, or is it...
It's not the high standard of a variance. I'll take more questions for it. Sir?
I have a question with regards to the building inspector. If somebody owns a home, they can put a stove downstairs.
Again, if you have a second stove, bathroom down there, sleeping, living, now you have a separate dwelling unit.
Why?
By definition, building code. It's defined in the building code as such.
That's ludicrous.
Definable space, though.
It's ludicrous. It's absolutely...
The Mass State Building Code is what we go by, and if it's defined the Mass State Building Code, it's defined the Mass State Building. That defines a dwelling unit.
Italians have always had a second kitchen downstairs.
Do they have a second bedroom, and a second bedroom, and another bathroom?
Again, defining a bedroom is a space with a door, windows, and a closet.
I think the difference is, is we're recognizing it, and what you do behind your closed doors is your business, but I think that we're actually going to acknowledge and accept this as an in-law apartment, so that's where the criteria comes in. I think if she wants to have her nephew live there, I mean, he can do that, there's no control.
I'm quite certain of that.
You know, but I think maybe because it got triggered off by putting in a separate meter, and now recording it, that there is going to be a second dwelling on the premises or in law, I think that's the issue. I, you know, I think it rests whether it meets the criteria or not.
Question, Bob Corley, 25th, over. My question is, if the person next door to that house decides to do the same thing, and the one on that side starts to do, have you established a precedent, and you could never say no to anyone else?
No, but that is always a concern whenever a special permit or variance is granted, is that although I don't, there's no legal reason that I'm aware of that would cause it to be considered a precedent. I certainly understand, and that is always a concern for me, when voting, that the next person that comes along and says, "You did it for somebody else, why won't you do it for me?" Whether or not they have a legal standing to say that it's a precedent, your point is well-taken, that once you allow something for one person, there is at least a...
Expectation.
Expectation, thank you, that you're gonna do it for other people.
I think most of the neighborhood would agree. If she wants somebody to live there with her, a relative to live there with her, we wouldn't have a problem with that. But to set this up as a separate entity creates a problem for the... But to set this up as a separate entity creates a problem for the future, and that's what we're worried about.
But just to be clear, if somebody wants to have a family member live with them, it doesn't matter whether the neighbors approve or not, that is an absolute right. Ms. Fidoni?
So, I would have to agree, so I, I think it's fine to have, you know, there's family members, there's kids, one day my kids might come home from college, hopefully they'll all have jobs. But they might move in and out, but the problem I have is kind of, I think in my head, the hardship, so if that had to happen, if there was an elderly situation, or if it was, they needed it to get subsidized rent for that person, because a person couldn't afford to live on their own, or they needed some type of something, I could understand, but being that there's, say, 38 houses on Pheasant Hill, and I know everyone's going to yell, there's probably more than that, you're now going to get the ability for each one of those houses now to turn every one of those houses, except for maybe one or two, into an apartment building. Because if one can do it, how could you really save all the rest of them? Because all of those houses have a wet bar, a lot of them have a bedroom, a bathroom, a closet downstairs, multiple windows, and that's just how they were built, and they were all finished for the, I mean, the most part, so you're going to have, they'll be back because now anyone else can do it.
The way I look at this is that this is a bylaw, or it's a zoning bylaw, a zoning that was adopted in 1989, and it specifically says accessory apartments. What I feel is the zoning board appeals has to look at is, we have to look at all the criteria that's included in this bylaw, okay? If the person that's coming before us is asking for a special permit, and they meet all the criteria, I don't see how we can, you know, how we can not approve, you know? I understand the concerns is that, okay, if she does it, and the neighbor next to her, you know, but like I said, this is a zoning bylaw that was created in 1989, okay? So, and it's been on the books for 20 years, okay? Almost 20, over 20 years. So, I mean, this is all that we can follow by. And like I said, if the opponent, or if she did came in here, and she did not meet any of the criteria, then yeah, we could probably disapprove. But so far, I haven't seen anything or heard anything that she has it met, okay? Now, we can approve this, you know, conditionally, with the building inspector going out and looking at it to make sure that it's safe, okay? It says that she has to have sanitation, she has to have cooking, and it has to have its own sleeping, which it does, okay? Now, the building inspector's going to go out, he's going to look at this, he's going to make a report to the zoning board, and then we'll make the final decision. If people, if the people in the town don't want these apartments, then I would highly suggest that you get a hold of the people that make the zoning laws and have a change. Because like I said, this has been on the books since 1989, it's there, and as long as a person that comes before us meets all the criteria, there's really no way we can disapprove it. Unless the building inspector comes back and says, okay, they didn't meet this, there's no safety, there's a safety issue, you know, whatever, then yeah, then we have to look at it. But if he comes back and says that everything is up to snuff, and even though it hasn't been an apartment for umpteen, umpteen years, the 10-year rule is now null and void, okay? He's the building inspector, he's also the zoning enforcement officer of the town, okay? We have to go by what we're told.
You have to go by the special permit rules.
What's been on the books since 1989 that hasn't...
This here...
This hasn't been an apartment, so what you're saying on the books, this is not a standing apartment. The zoning board is responsible, I'm talking, the zoning board is responsible for zoning in a special permit. So this is not on the books, so that is actually inaccurate information. This is not...
One at a time.
This is not on the books. This is not a standing, nor has been, in 30-something, even over that, anywhere in history can you find that this was a legal apartment? So, in no way, shape, or form, and let's be very clear on this, is this in any way been on the books as an apartment? The job of the zoning board, and the job of you, Mr. Fidoni, is to grant or not grant a special permit based on that. So before you say it is on the books, be very clear, this has not on the books, has never been on the books. Thank you.
But she's asking for an accessory apartment?
This has not been on the books, that's what the statement you're making.
I think, I think what he meant was that the rule has been on the books.
Right, the bylaw has been on the books since 1989.
Ma'am?
Mary Halliday, 26, Pheasant Hill. You probably have answered this question before, but I need it clarified. Is an accessory apartment considered a rental property?
It doesn't say that.
Doesn't specify in the accessory apartment rules that I can see.
I'll bet.
Because if so, is Pheasant Hill Run zoned for rental property? Are we a single-family dwelling street?
You can rent your property if you're, you know, if you move to Florida, you could rent your property.
Are you aware of any rule on that?
The accessory apartment is allowed in a single-family residential district.
For properties, or no?
Is it considered rental property? It doesn't speak for...
The, that unit, the purpose of an accessory, it has five different purposes. It can either be an opportunity for older homeowners to gain income, otherwise they'd be forced to leave their house. It can be available so that moderate-income households that otherwise couldn't live in the town can. It can be a way of offering a variety of types of housing. It protects the single-family residential character of the neighborhood, because it's specifically written in not to show like a two-family. And it's a way of legalizing conversions to encourage the town to monitor conversions for code compliance. Whether it's rented, not rented, it can be any of that.
So your tax, you have a...
Your tax is assessed based on your structure.
Also, this is two structures, though?
No, it's within that single structure. You'd have to talk to Sally, the town assessor, but this building's been assessed right along.
I suppose the assessor, though, if they determine that the building has somewhat increased in value, they could change the assessment?
They assess it on kitchens and bathrooms and all of the parts of that house, and it's been like that right along.
We would assess more, but we had got our building permit when we built the home, so it was assessed every year since we started. I think that the only compelling issue would be under the par verse, which he just cited reasons to encourage the building inspector to be involved in the public safety, when people do want to use apartments for other members of the public. But I think it comes to five words, says legalize conversions to encourage the town to monitor conversions for code compliance. And I think the only little aspect of this that throws a glitch is the fact that it was already converted, and I think it's coming to us in hindsight, because now Chris is kind of going to be compelled to, you know, make it code compliant, because it's been grandfathered, it's been there for 10 years, even though it was never inspected or legalized. The conversion is now going to have to be taken kind of like in point, because you're going to either approve it, or, well, if you do approve it, I think that, you know, it would have been ideal if they could have been here before the conversion was done. And I think that's...
There was no conversion. This is how she bought the house, it was not converted.
Well, when the prior one was converted.
Okay, well, that was over 15 years ago.
But that doesn't make it legal.
Actually, it does, currently a building inspector, but so, move on to my point.
Okay, because I have a very old home, and I'm going to come before you next month and put an accessory apartment in, because I think this is a really unique way. Sitting on the CBA, this was the only one bylaw we never passed. I don't, I mean, I think this is a new way of looking at it, but I don't think it's been looked at in this manner before.
How is this a new way of looking at it? What has been done that's new?
Every single accessory apartment that came before us, it got shot down.
You would get all the...
Hold on, hold on, that's not a new way of looking at something. It may be a decision that is approved where none have been approved in the past. When you say a new way of looking at things, you imply that we are interpreting the rules in a way that had not been interpreted before. And if you're going to say that, I'd like to know which rule you think is under new interpretation.
I think that looking at the aspect that something has been in existence for greater than 10 years...
Which rule are we looking at differently?
The whole, every single one of them, because you're going to say that it doesn't need to meet the criteria of the today's building code, because it was completed prior to 10 years before.
That's the building coming up as zoning bylaw.
All right, we're going to move on from that.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Sir?
I would like to add one more thing. As a owner of multiple rental units, I have come to meet many different sets of tenants. And the one thing I can tell you about the majority of them, you can't trust them at all. Their presentation to you is a sales pitch to get into your unit. I think opening this up to be an accessory apartment, to have a separate meter, whether she's allowed to transfer that to the next owner or not is irrelevant, because the next owner is going to come in, either rent it as two separate units, live there or not live there, doesn't really matter. No one here is going to enforce it. You're opening up the town for liability costs to try to enforce this. We saw what happened with the Resmo Motoring, we tried to get rid of them, how much money that cost and time it took in the court. This is creating a liability for the town. I don't trust anybody that's going to move in here later on, or that she won't leave. Nothing personal, I just have a problem with what people say they're actually going to follow with. As soon as she grabs the special permit, she does need to get a special permit, so you do have the option to say no. Otherwise, it wouldn't be a case of getting a special permit, it would just be a lot. That's all.
I'm ready to vote on this thing. I've had it. All she's asking for is a special permit. Would we make, we could either vote yes or no for a special permit or not?
I appreciate that, but I do think it's important to hear.
I know, I've heard it, I've heard it.
I have one question there. If it is an accessory apartment, it has to be separate from the main building, right? Even within the building, it should be isolated. It's not, it's not that.
There's a reference in here, too, about it being distinct in some way, I can't remember where it is.
Someone was earlier saying, you know... That's the one, only one thing is...
I'm sorry. I'd like to better understand, about your question.
Hey, if I can have some quiet, please.
You're talking about the particular door.
I was just throwing that out there.
No, but it should, you mentioned, you know, there is another tenancy, so they can go with that entrance, right? So this apartment should be closed up, no way the accessory apartment person can get into the main building, primary residence.
There's not a condition of the bylaw for this?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of saying accessory apartment. What is an accessory apartment?
An accessory apartment is a separate housekeeping unit, complete with its own sleeping, cooking, and sanitation.
Separate housekeeping unit.
That is substantially contained within the structure of a single-family dwelling, or functions as a separate unit.
Does it need its own lockable door to be a separate dwelling? That's your...
Yes. I would advise the apartment, right?
He said he would not live in the apartment.
I don't want to, they will not.
Fortunately, you don't have to. I would like to respond to, but I will note for the record that the issue with Mr. Fidoni, with respect to the current owner, living there or not living there, not living there would violate the criteria for having an accessory apartment. And so, I know that you're aware of that, but I'd point it out for the record, because the concern appears to be, she's there, she's not there, who's going to know who's going to enforce it? There is an enforcement right, I don't know in particular what the enforcement mechanism would be, but there is an enforcement right to, I guess, to terminate the special permit, or to revoke the special permit. So, I think that's...
Do you think we could further limit beyond the bylaw to say, as a condition of this, that it will only be, this special permit comes with a condition that it must be a family member that's occupying?
I think that's beyond the scope of the bylaw, it's unusually restricted, under the text of the bylaw. That does not appear to be the intent of the bylaw, that it must be a family member, even though typically it's a family member.
But do you think we could, with the agreement of the applicant, do you think we could impose that further restriction?
I don't think that we should put the applicant under the pressure of feeling like she has to breathe in it. Because it's not in the bylaw, that's why. If you don't like what the bylaw says, you are free to go through your officials and change it. But if we need to make a decision based on what the bylaw actually says, not what we would like it to say, not what we think it should say, we have to go out by what it says. And if the criteria are met, then the decision should be clear.
Is there anybody here who is a, in a butter, who does not oppose this? Okay, I'll take that as a no one present at the hearing. Is not in opposition.
I would like to move to post-public comment unless somebody else has something to add.
Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add before we close public comment?
Someone?
Sir? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, closing public comment. Open deliberation. Anybody want to make a motion?
I think, you know, I'm still not convinced it's a separate, isolated, separate housekeeping unit. That bothers me. It's not a separate apartment or accessory apartment. It is part of this. Without isolation, how can it be it is a separate apartment? That's my concern. It does say it's a separate housekeeping unit. Anybody else making a noise?
I share the concern. I think the plain text suggests a different meaning than this, with all respect to the building inspector, separate suggests that it's independent.
It does seem that both means of... Well, actually, I have a question on that. I'm going to reopen this, so I can ask a question of the building inspector. The nature of a split level wouldn't, well, I don't know what the interior of this looks like, but the upstairs occupant, the purposes of this discussion, if the upstairs occupant were to enter through the garage, would they not have to pass through the living space of the downstairs occupant in the nature of a split level?
Not necessarily, if there's a common hall at the top, if there's a common hall at the bottom of the stairs, for the access to the garage. A lot of the split levels that I've seen is typically a laundry room, you know, if it didn't have the apartment, you'd have your rec room to your right, in this particular case, and then a laundry room, utility room. Typically, you have a little landing area for... Typically, you have a little landing area at the bottom of the stairs.
If that was the case, that you have a common hallway, that would then mean that there would need to be a, some sort of further division by both wall and door that would separate the apartment area from the common hallway, correct?
Correct.
So if you had the entrance to the, from the garage to that common stairway in a split level, that, so you enter the garage, there's a, functionally a hallway, and then you have the main set of stairs. In order for this to be considered an accessory apartment, it would have to be some kind of wall with a door that separated that apartment area from that common hallway, correct?
That, yeah, you do it in that scenario, yeah.
Well, you could do it, but wouldn't that be required in order for this to be truly, because it, it has to be separately contained, or I can't remember how it's exactly phrased. So absent that kind of division, wouldn't these two dwellings bleed together?
If it would make the board happy, I'd be more than happy, so if, if the board would like a continuance, maybe the applicant would be willing to go along with the continuance and put this issue to rest as far as what's going on at the bottom of the stairs, I'd be more than happy to go out, we can map out and better illustrate how the accessory apartment works in conjunction with the rest of the house.
I do think, um, your concern, well, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but having grown up in a, in a split, the entrance to the garage usually just opens into the, the downstairs area, and then you have the common stairway. You can create it in such a way where you put a wall and a door, so you have the common entrance to the, from the garage that goes up the stairs, and then adjacent to those stairs would be some sort of wall with a door in it that would seal off that one area.
I totally agree, but we don't know.
Aye. Which I think is what...
The building inspector and other inspector of the place.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just curious, you were talking about two egresses, that front entrance, how could it be called one when you have to go into the people who live upstairs, invite into their house? Excuse me, I can't, it's not separate, it's not separating any of our houses. So I'm just curious about that. That's...
Well, it is, and I won't put words in the building inspector's mouth, he can correct if I'm wrong, but I believe the building inspector has given his opinion that, under the code, that constitutes a form of egress.
Well, that would satisfy a code requirement for that unit to have a form of egress if it has access to the front door.
Ma'am, is there a division between the garage and this apartment? Is there a door that separates? If I entered the garage, walked through the, the door that separates the house from the garage, and as I, I walked through that door, when I reach that common staircase, is there a further door that separates this apartment?
There's a door.
I'm sorry?
There's a door.
There is a door that separates the apartment, the, the kitchen area, the, all that from the common hallway?
Yes.
That's not illustrated in the pictures, though, correct?
Yes.
It's actually, they're working it from mark and end, but so you could just split, and you're split, and you go down the stairs, there's the...
And door.
And then you need to go down.
Well, so the door is at the bottom of the stairs?
Yes. Correct. And then it's the door into the garage.
See, the, my concern there is, then if the door is at the bottom of the stairs, and once you pass through that door, you are now free to either go left into the accessory apartment, or right into the garage, or vice versa, whichever way it happens to go. But there is no demarcation between entering the garage and the accessory apartment. So, for example, ma'am, if you were to enter through the garage to go upstairs to your home, would you be able to look into this area, or is there some sort of wall that divides off that area of the home? Because absent a dividing, pardon me, a dividing line that walls off your entrance from the garage into this area, I'm not sure that we have separate. It's separate. Because now that, that common area, walking down the stairs, if you go, go to the garage, you are walking through the space.
And with, with the way the house is built, sometimes you don't have to go through the downstairs. You can go through the other doors, there are three doors. Outer doors. There's one door coming through the kitchen, one door from the, from the sitting room, and one door from the garage. Those are three entrances. So if you have to, not, if you don't want to... Pass through the apartment, you can use the other two doors.
But if you were to park your car in the garage, absent leaving the garage, walking around to the front door or the back door, and you entered the house through the garage, through the door that separates the garage from the, the living space, you would be walking into the apartment area?
Yeah, the only place that you walk in is the kitchen. Going to the sitting room and the bedroom is a door.
But the, the kitchen would be visible to you as you walk from the garage to the upstairs?
Yes.
So you kind of walk in here.
Is that...
Yes, they are going through their other apartment, right?
But these apartments are not letting you.
No, but that's not the...
I was trying to understand the apartments, or separate housekeeping unit.
Okay. Did you change your opinion, Chris?
There's a question.
Question, I will, after Chris answers this.
So, away from a special permit in the bylaw, back in the building, for those who have egress and life safety in that, the primary residence and the accessory apartment, the main apartment, we satisfy with the conditions of both those units? The housekeeping, the separate housekeeping unit in the, in the primary residence? That's what a law field would do, is confirm that there is no risk to egress.
I, I, I hear what you're saying as far as the egress is concerned, but where you have the, I'm just gonna refer to these people as tenants, uh, the upstairs tenant and the downstairs tenant, when, if they both have access to that garage door, not the exterior garage door, the door from the garage into the building, and each time the upstairs tenant walks through that, they are functionally in that living space, are we still meeting the requirement for it to be a...
Separate housekeeping.
Separate, um...
Yeah, how the spaces are used has no bearing on this issue. The issue would be if, if the occupant within that dwelling could safely egress without walking through the apartment, that would be the issue.
I, I understand what you're saying with regard to safety, but with regard to the requirement under the bylaw that they be distinct, um, let's see how it's phrased.
That line is, is it separated via the fact that it has its own sanitation, own ability to cook, own living space, own room, own sleeping space, not the application of a door?
Separate means it has its own facilities.
Correct.
Separate does not mean it has its own segregable door.
Correct.
To, to, to put the space off from the other space.
Correct.
Excuse me.
Yo, I'm sorry.
So, with that said, um, I, I just wanna keep in mind, the zoning board actually is the one to vote on this. This is an opinion of the building inspector on how the wording and his interpretation of the bylaw, in no way, it's an opinion before the board, but the board at the end of day is the one that makes the decision on this and the enforcement for the zoning.
That opinion is actually made via the zoning enforcement officer, not the building inspector.
Then we wouldn't be here because you would be able to do that yourself. You wouldn't need us for a public hearing, you'd be thinking that, it is actually the board, the board that would approve this special permit, and the wording in there does state that it's separate, which this building does not have separate. It's the opinion of how you're articulating that law.
I wanna vote on this thing. Special permit or not? Forget all the details, let the building inspector take care of it.
It's not there.
I think we could require that.
Is it segregable?
Yes.
Now, this is a relative, it's okay, but what if she has to rent for an unknown person? So the unknown person, when she is not at home, she could venture out.
That would be her problem.
Yeah, but it's town problem too. Then she would be calling the...
It's not just an issue of whether it's, I'm sorry, I don't...
It's okay, ma'am.
Forget me, please.
No, 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 go ahead.
Thank you. It's not just an issue only of her problem. It's an issue of, has the requirement been met? Or, or will we conditionally grant it on the condition that it is met? Uh, and I don't know if that would make the project, uh, for the, I don't know if that would make this no longer feasible. I've certainly seen splits where you could have the whole downstairs apartment, um, with its own door, and then a door that goes to the garage, or up the stairs, and then up the stairs you could have another door. Um, and the, I, I don't know the layout, I, I don't know how...
Would you consider that segregable at that point?
Yes, I was, I, I think it's clearly, uh, its own space, and not, not sharing the living space, sharing the car, sharing the stairway, but not sharing the living space, which is a concern that you have. If, if either resident has to go through the living space of the other resident to exercise that egress, that...
Five is, I think five is where that comes in. The accessory apartment shall be clearly subordinate, a clearly subordinate part of the single family dwelling, and then the other part isn't, in addition, shall not increase the square footage of the original structure. I'm not, the, the second clause is not, uh, is not applicable, but is it clearly subordinate when the upstairs person, every time they walk to the garage, is walking through that living space?
Well, it doesn't hire your finest abordment. Subordinate means you gotta let 'em do it, yeah.
Well, I think subordinate is in the sense that the accessory apartment is the subordinate. Do you think it's clear that the accessory apartment is subordinate? Yes, I, I agree, that's clear. Now, the question is, is it clear that the subordinate area has to be segrebable in such a way that the dominant apartment occupant doesn't walk through it every time they go to the garage?
I think that's inherent in the nature of the person.
So you do think there needs to be some sort of...
I do.
You could weld on it and put conditions and contingent upon it, write special conditions on the special permit.
Thank you.
You did that a lot.
I've already said that, but yes, thank you.
I, I'm inclined to agree that it, um, there has to be some, it can't just be the fact that you have a kitchen downstairs, there has to be some way to divide this, that it is clearly a separate unit, that is subordinate. If every time you walk downstairs, you're walking through, or walk down, there's a kitchen right there, I'm not, that just feels like, somebody said, and I don't wanna offend anyone, but Italians have, have kitchens downstairs, um, that is mostly what I envisioned if you're walking downstairs and there's a, there's a kitchen, that's not, in my opinion, a clearly subordinate area.
Can I ask a question, are we done here?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Can I make a comment? Washroom and dryer, can I ask where they're located?
They're located inside the garage, not in the, not in that apartment, they are inside the garage.
Inside the garage?
Yes.
Okay. So where, if I understand this correctly, this whole decision is just based on the fact that she wants to separate the electricity so that she can charge, because we're spending a lot of time on, over just separating electricity. My God, just determine them out and charge them a portion of their electricity.
Well, unfortunately, I think, since we're here, we've gone beyond that. Yes, ma'am?
Captain, on 39 High Street, West Poilston. We've sat here for two hours and 45 minutes, watching both one and the other. We're, we're here to give our case against 80-plus houses in Oakville that afford to be owned. I think it's time for us to be very, thank you.
Maybe the building inspector, it's not that, see, it's a position isolated, then it's a, move this down for an extra week.
May I just ask one question? It's not, good.
I, I, I think, I think that we should put the condition...
I do too, so we don't have any backups that you can...
Looking at the way they are, it's not an isolated, isolated apartment, then what...
We'll go faster if it's quiet.
In hearing all this, it's not an isolated accessory apartment. So let them make the isolated accessory apartment, then they can...
But they can't get a building permit. They're, they, they need to, they've come here saying, we wanna do this work, but we don't wanna do the work, unless we know that it's gonna be okay once we do it. So, that's the electrical work component. Mr. Chairman, therefore, move to, uh, grant the special permit with the condition, with the condition that, uh, the accessory apartment be truly separate with its own lockable door and the...
One.
I'm trying to think of how to say it. That, that each, that each residence, or each dwelling unit, sorry, within the, the residence, uh, should have its, uh, its own door, and it should be entirely separate from the other building space. And if you wanna refine that, I invite you to do so. But I have some...
My, my concern with that is, it leaves a lot open to interpretation, so we grant that, you know, I kinda think I'd like to see, I don't think it needs to be an architectural sketch, but some sense of what, how that's interpreted.
I withdraw my motion. No, 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 it's, I don't take that personally, you're right.
Yeah, I think something, if you could, you could have a door at the top, you could have a hall at the bottom, you've gotta have those. I mean, it, it's not brain surgery here. I mean, if you know what a split looks like, you said you grew up in one, and I know exactly what you're saying about having common areas so that nobody walks into each other's space, I, I get that. But that's very doable without an architect, I mean, now you're not just gonna...
I'm not suggesting an architect. No, I specifically said, I don't think it needs to be an architectural drawing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I, I think that would be completely unreasonable.
Of course, she doesn't wanna do that, unless you're gonna get determined, so I don't see why you couldn't conditionally be able to determine, and I'd like Chris to...
You wouldn't give him, give a drawing. I know you don't wanna come back, but this is now a point where...
Only the drawing has to be done by an architect, I think the draw just, here just so I can see what the layout of the, it looks like. I mean, you could just draw it.
Well, what about a photograph of what it looks like?
Draw some lines on it.
Right.
Okay. I'll say, I'll say any motions that anybody wants.
May I ask one more question? Is she gonna have to send out?
I, I moved to continue this to the next meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you want to say it again?
I'm sorry, I forgot to say...
The motion was to continue this next meeting. The motion was to continue this next meeting. All favor?
Aye.
All those?
No.
Charlie, you opposed?
I know, I want to continue it.
You do want to continue it?
Yeah.
Okay. Continue.
No, Dave opposed.
So, you understand what the...
Yeah, I do.
We need to see that separately.
I do.
When is the next meeting?
I just think it's a matter of...
When is the next meeting? Seventeenth, seventeenth?
I think so.
We think the seventeenth, but we're checking.
Seventeenth, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
From personal experience, working in most houses all over West County, most houses have been built before addition in the planning, having a summer kitchen.
Yes, sir.
I have a boss who might sell it. I have an area, or even a kitchen. It's part of a long... Five hundred twenty-three thousand. But I live in the same area.
Seven six.
I understand.
It's only a little bit, a single family, not...
At... Did you... Did you break?
No, I am relinquishing the chair duties back to the rightful...
Nine oh seven. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for staying. On the agenda next, someone took from me. It's okay. So, Sumiola. It's not... Yeah. So... Sumiola will be giving informal discussion regarding 194 Maple Street. You will? No, you're not Sumiola, I know her. So... This will be done... Mrs. Miola has two minutes to come back in. I'm going to go grab her. This will be done in less than fifteen minutes. This will be an informal discussion, which will provide information for us. We will digest that information and we'll move on to the next topic, which is updates, informal... All right.
Fast meeting. Here you go. I move to pass over that. That's where the word is in.
So, that's within the chair's discretion.
All right, so we're passing that over. I don't know if anybody wants to talk about this. Ninety-four North Main Street, update and informal discussion.
Was that the first thing?
No, I'm not. That was the first thing. Project status from application, Mr. Ali, on his 40B consultant. There's also a discussion of additional project information required by board to make informed decision. Discussion of application requested for modification to existing comprehensive permit. Discussion of likely need to draft an amended and restated comprehensive permit. Discussion of agenda and schedule for future meetings with the applicant. Also, I want to make sure everyone is aware that we applied for a grant towards payment of our 40B consultant. We were granted five thousand dollars from VHB.
MHP.
MHP. I'm saying VHB. I looked over at this. And Mr. Ali has agreed to pay five thousand dollars towards that fee too. Our 40B consultant, if you could just stand and state your name for everyone.
Ed Marshaun.
Is our 40B consultant. It actually would be beneficial, I think, everyone. I don't know if you've actually talked to anyone, just to give a three-minute little bio about yourself for everyone to digest, just so they don't think it's my cousin.
Correct. My name's Ed Marshaun. I live in Brooklyn. And I worked as a real estate advisor independently since nineteen ninety. Before that, I worked on real estate development. And I've worked on over a hundred and fifty-five chapters 40B projects. That's really been my specialty. And my practice has been diverse because I've worked with ZBA, advising ZBA's, where I get paid through a third party. That third party is MHP, Mass Housing Partnership Fund. I've also worked probably on about one-third of those projects, providing development services to developers. And my approach on 40B is it's law. Developers have significant leverage on it. If a ZBA denies a project or approves a project with conditions that the developer finds make... Or feels makes the project uneconomic, then that developer has a right to appeal to HAC. Therefore, that puts the ZBA in a difficult position where it has to exercise its judgment to come up with a development that it feels best serves the town, but still complies with the requirements of 40B. So, there's a lot of judgment involved with being a ZBA member. It's not like being a member of a planning board where the rules are much more clear. They're in black and white. The maximum length of a dead-end road is seven hundred and fifty feet. If you can't do seven hundred and fifty feet, you have a problem unless you can get away. Here, the ZBA is charged with balancing the need, the regional need for affordable housing with local needs. And those local needs are primarily public health, safety, environmental design, and some other factors. But I think it's fair to say that the HAC has fairly consistently sided with developers. So, what boards always try to do and what towns try to do is to get the best possible project. On those hundred and fifty-five cases, I think it's fair to say that neighbors weren't very supportive of multiple. That's a fact. I mean, that's a fact within real estate, let alone real estate that includes affordable housing. So, in a nutshell, that's what I'm thinking.
Thank you very much. So, do you... So, if it actually do, I know you're sitting, but if you could slide over to your facing everyone so you can give them an update. Bring the chair over, just so they can hear exactly the status of...
We're actually going to be very brief this evening. We know that Mr. Marshaun has come on just recently, and I have spoken to him about getting him the material he needs. He does have a list of items he's handed us tonight, which we are not going to address tonight, given that we do want to respond in a concise and comprehensive manner. Some of those items have been addressed before in previous hearings and so forth. So, we'd like to give our presentation this evening, which is basically, as we stated last time, we had offered to modify the number of units down from ninety-six down to eighty. At the last meeting, we... We... I mentioned that I will make an official request for that modification. So, this evening here tonight, I do have a letter that I had sent. Well, I'd like to present to the chairperson and to the board members. I believe I have enough for everyone tonight. It's extra. What I have here tonight is a letter that basically... Do you want me to read it in for the record? It's only a page we're going to have long. The rest is attached.
So, hold on. So, my question is, did you submit this as a formal modification, or is this just a letter?
No, this is the form... This is the formal modification letter that I am submitting tonight.
And what's important is that 40B requires a board to make a decision within twenty days of the receipt of that letter as to whether the requested modifications are substantial or insubstantial. And there's some guidelines as to what constitutes a substantial as opposed to an insubstantial change. If the board does not make a determination within twenty days, the modifications are granted as requested. So, it's critical that you make that determination. If you determine that the modifications are insubstantial, the guideline state and the right state that they're approved, most boards, normally there's some negotiations around those modifications. If you feel that the requested modifications are substantial, you are required to schedule a public hearing within thirty days. So, that's basically how it works. Very often, it depends upon the relationship between a board and the applicant. And remember, these are changes after the comprehensive permit is issued. So, there's normally an established relationship. Here, you've had some relationship with the developer, but the history of this development is quite open. I'm just beginning to learn more about this development. Now, very often, developers will grant extensions to that, but you need to have any extension in writing, obviously, prior to the expiration of that date. I'm not sure what the expectation is tonight. My guess is there'll be some discussions. I'm hoping to walk you through a list of the information that I feel you need and are entitled to, to make an informed decision that may or may not be related directly to each of these modifications. But we'll discuss that as we proceed.
Have you seen this previous to this being ended up?
Yes. I received it, I believe, this morning.
Yes, you did. Have you had a chance to look at it?
Briefly.
This modification that we are presenting tonight is, as we stated last time, is just for the reduction of the number of units from ninety-six down to eighty, the removal of the top floor of Building C. So, if you so please, let me go through the letter because I think it does address some of Mr. Marshaun's questions. Based on the previous meeting with the board, we are officially submitting the following revised site and architectural plans, which identifies the reduction of the number of units and required modification, the site layouts, building layouts, parking layouts, lighting, hydrant location, building elevation, and floor plans. The following plans shall amend and or replace any previously planned... Previous plans submitted to the board, which should be the reference plans moving forward. So, what we're submitting tonight, which one of the areas that have been up for discussion, is what should we be looking at? So, we're presenting that. Then the letter goes on to further state exactly what each site plan consists of and what the architectural plans consist of. And we're doing this so we all have a check sheet to start working from. The above updated plans have been submitted to the building inspector for his review and comments. Pursuant to seventy-six CMR fifty-six point oh five eleven A, we are hereby notifying the board of appeals for the following modification to the comprehensive permit. Tonight, these are the modifications we requested. The total unit count is being reduced from ninety-six units to eight units as identified in the above revised plan in the attached summary. Building A is modified from fourteen three-bedrooms to six two-bedrooms and eight three-bedrooms as identified in the above revised plans and attached summary. Building C is reduced from fifty four... One moment.
You had asked me to stand or something, and I just responded that I can't. I haven't seen that.
This is...
All right, that's the one.
Number four, the number of parking spaces are reduced to a hundred and seventy-two as identified in the above revised plans and attached summary. Building elevation, floor plans, and site as identified in the above revised plans and attached summary. Upon review by the board, we are impressed that the board concludes that the above changes to the comprehensive permit are not substantial as that term is defined in seventy-six CMR fifty-six point oh five eleven and seventy-six CMR fifty-six point oh seven paragraph four, and therefore modifies the permit. In addition, as discussed with Mr. Marshaun, the board's consulted, we are prepared to submit additional material requested by Mr. Marshaun in a concise and organized manner, once we receive the list of requested items. We also will provide a hair with attached to this letter the advised construction commitment letter from Rockland Trust for the eighty units. We look forward to working with you in the succession, completing this project. Please feel free to contact me if any additional questions or comments. So, this evening, once again, I just want to restate that we are providing requests for modification to do just reduce in the units and the other four items I had outlined. We are providing site plans, which we are now moving forward on, are the site plans that we want to be reviewed for this project, and the architectural plans for Building A, Building B, which are just partial at this time, and Building C, which is complete set of the drawings which were submitted to the building inspector for review for building permit review. Why are Building A and Building B partial? Because we haven't just completed those. For the partial requirements, they're not complete for the building permit review. They are, we feel, complete for the comprehensive permit and the modifications or changes. What's partial about them? We don't have a complete construction set. We probably have more structural. You have a fire analysis, safety analysis. There are several other requirements for a building permit set that's not required under what is required for a 40B review. We do still owe some additional revisions on A and B. We owe you a side elevation. We did not have time to get that together in time. And we also, I believe, that we need to have, provide a building elevation cross-section, which we do provide for Building C, but haven't been made to Building A and B yet, which is a typical cross-section of the building. You mentioned in your letter and what you just said now, that there's some additional things out there. As Mr. Marshaun said, we have twenty days. You have read in your letter to provide Mr. Marshaun some things. Sounds like he's asked for some things. I just received... Excuse me, I just received that list tonight. I'm not suggesting you have this. I'm just... These are all preface to where we're going. Okay. To keep this as efficient as possible, and I know I'm the worst person to do that, but... The way we go tonight and for you, we... Our next meeting is not within twenty days. We would have to adjust that in order to act within twenty days. As Mr. Marshaun said, we can work together, we can get an extension. In order for us to digest this, make an informed decision, I think we want input from Mr. Marshaun, who's asked you to provide some things to him, which you agree that you would like to do that. Sounds like there's some more additional things that you said you weren't able to prepare for tonight. So, I'm thinking that we would like some time for you to get that to Mr. Marshaun so that before we vote as to whether or not this is in standing. Yes, I'll...
Let me jump in.
Let me, let me jump in. There are a lot of complicated things with this project. The determination of whether this is a substantial or insubstantial change, frankly, I don't think is that complicated. A reduction in units is, is not a substantial change. If you were going the other way, it would be a substantial change. What is critical here is the status of Lot Three. And looking at that site plan, it's not clear to me whether, what the status of Lot Three is. Lot Three, as many of you know, is a lot at the top of the hill. I know that is important to the board, I know it's important to the neighbors. In a prior discussion with Dean Harrison, he informed me that that lot continued to be included within the 40B development. You need to have confirmation on that because if there's any change in that, that could change my opinion in terms of whether or not this is a substantial or an insubstantial change.
So at this time, are you presenting us with the status of Lot Three?
I will make a, the status of Lot Three is we're not changing anything that we have submitted to the, to the board. That Lot Three is still included as part of the overall site plan. We are still prepared to put conservation restriction, just as it was originally, um, stated in the original amended, the half decision, the amended comprehensive permit.
So if that's the case, and the other change is a minor modification of unit mix, I would, I would feel strongly that the right vote is that this would be an insubstantial change. What's more important is there are never of issues and a lot of cleanup and clarification that is required for this project. And that's why I would like to walk through this list with you. I didn't expect the applicant to have this information tonight. Dean's got me a lot of stuff. I barely had a chance to review it the last couple of days. But what's important is, given the changes, and I'm gonna go to my end item first, this project cries for an amended and restated decision. It is very difficult for anybody to understand what the current status is. I've worked with developers, recently had a project approved in Duxbury that had a long history also. And we volunteered, we said, let's have a re- amended and restated statement. Because when the lender looks at it and the subsidizing agency with the, when we have to get a zoning opinion, you wanna have everything in one relatively simple document. And I think it's in everybody's interest to do that. Now, in order to get there, the, the drawings, you can't have incomplete drawings. Their job to do drawings to the 40B standards because you reference, or you will reference in this amended and restated agreement, a certain set of drawings. So that when Chris Lund, as the building inspector and zoning enforcement offices, officer, inspects the job, he knows exactly what it is he should be looking for. And what we try to do early to avoid problems later is to have a good set of documents. And right now, there's not a good set of documents.
I just, I disagree with that last thing. We have worked with Chris to make sure that he's agreed to the site engineering drawings to, which we have presented from the original set that was presented as part of the approved permit. We have amended and revised those based on the new layout. The architectural drawing, building C is at a set of the construction documents, which you normally don't get as part of the review at this stage. A and B, as I mentioned, yes, going through, um, the requirements of a submission for architectural drawings. We are missing a couple of items on that. Um, but like I said, and Ed probably doesn't have the history of what we have been presenting in the past. But to say that they're inadequate, I don't think is, is actually factual. I think that they probably could use some improvement after we do some reviews with the board. But what we wanted to do tonight as part of this, which we've been hearing from pretty much everybody, the public and the board, is that what, what should we be looking at? In last meeting, we came to the board and said informally, we're gonna reduce it to eighty units. At the next meeting, I will submit the formal request with the drawings that represent that, which we presented last time. That is our, um, objective. The object of our presentation tonight is to do that and make sure the board has a copy and that the public can access those to the board. Um, regarding the eighty unit modification, there are, we're not asking you to approve the final permit, we're asking for a modification to the unit count. Part of the reason we need to do this is so we can go back to the subsidizing agency, MHP, um, and let them know the board is okay with that, so we can amend or modify the project eligibility letter that, the approval we see, we see the commitment we receive from that. We've got one from Rockland Trust for the eighty units. We don't have one yet from MHP, but that's been kind of the chicken and the egg with them. They want me to get something from the board saying you're willing to go to the eighty units. And I can't really ask for, I would like to ask for a vote for it. I know we're kind of in a difficult situation.
Can I step in this way? I do agree the board needs what Ed Marchand is saying about putting all the paperwork together, what he's looking for it, because he's the new man again, third consultant in the board.
Well, not the third, not the third consultant for you, so please, just step back, so hold on a second. So.
Can I finish it?
Go ahead.
Can I finish it? My suggestion is, what all Ed Marchand is looking for, we are obligated to provide it to him. I don't have a problem. Instead of going fifteen times submitting the same documents, we should vote on a couple of things. I'm requesting that we should go, uh, for a vote for eighty units, so that the process, what he's looking for it, will be provided. I'm looking for eighty units because there, I have to do enough work of the board, I had to go to MHP, get my final approval for eighty units, and I had to go to the water and sewer department, I'm in their documents. So I, I need time for that one also. So I do understand what Ed Marchand is looking for, all the other documents, which will be provided. But I need, I'm requesting the board, if it is a insufficient, in-
Substantial change.
Insubstantial change, I would ask for a vote for eighty units.
Are you asking that we se- that we separate-
No.
-that issue from the other issues that you're at?
Yes, yes, yes. So that we can proceed in it. So maybe that we can-
I don't want this to be misinterpreted. I think there's adequate information tonight to make an informed decision as to whether it's a substantial or insubstantial change. However, given the timing on this development, given that, that it's this close and that sort of engineering and architectural plans have been submitted, well, what's normally would expect to have detailed drawings on the whole deal, and eventually, I would assume the construction lender and the permanent lender expects sort of completed drawings. Because there's a step, there are four major steps in a 40B project. I'll go quickly through them because I think you can handle them. Developer has to get a PAL project eligibility letter, that's a ticket that allows the developer to submit a comprehensive permit application. That's been done. And of course, when you ask for a change, the only thing the board is authorized to look at are those changes themselves. This one's a little different because there's, there's been a significant change in that you have a new developer. But that, that change in developer has been approved by the subsidizing agency and the applicant has completed that. The next step, which is a step most boards are not familiar with, is that the applicant has to get final approval. That's a defined term in the 40B world. Final approval is a final review by the subsidizing agency that the project satisfies all of the, or that the agency can still make the findings that were necessary to issue a project eligibility letter. Here is difference because MHP never made those original findings. Those original findings, I believe, were made by the HCD. So Mass Housing has to do that, and the critical requirements on that is, they wanna see the financing commitments. And I just received today the Rockland Trust, which is a construction loan commitment. MHP had issued a permanent loan commitment, however, that was for ninety-six units. They'll have to review it again based upon an eighty unit development. A regulatory agreement has to be executed. Towns controls these developments through two primary documents, the comprehensive permit itself and the regulatory agreement. The regulatory agreement will not get signed, it's the only two parties to the regulatory agreement, the subsidizing agency and the applicant. The town is not a party to the regulatory agreement. MHP has had discussions with, long discussions with the applicant. If you take a look at its commitment letter, which you have copies of, because I instructed Dean, he never sends anything to me directly, he sends it to the board through the pocket to me. Uh, they have some special construction monitoring requirements, some minimum equity requirements, debt service reserve requirement, all of these help protect the town. So I think it's actually been a plus that MHP is gonna be the subsidizing agency because they have money in the deal, and when you have money in the deal, you look at it a lot more closely. Rockland Trust is gonna have money in the deal, they're gonna look at it closely because if it's not built in accordance with plans and specs, the permanent lender is not obligated to fund. And remember, we also call permanent loans takeout loans because they pay off that construction loan. So on this project, and I have to say, I've looked at some other projects that this applicant has done, and there've been issues with other projects. That's on the table, and therefore people say, well, he's done some projects okay, some other projects have had issues, one of those in West Boylston. You'd be foolish not to have very high requirements. I spoke with Lester and I read about Holden. So you're gonna keep the leash short on this, okay? And you're gonna expect that it's gonna be a good project, but you're gonna have provisions in your comprehensive permit that give you the ability to enforce your requirements to make sure this project gets built the way 40B projects should get built. And everybody wants to do that. I mean, the applicant wants to do that, the lenders certainly want that to be done, the neighbors want that to be done, and the ZBA wants that to be done. I want it to be done, to be done because I think, you know, I'm an advocate for 40B, I might as well say it right now, okay? And if 40B projects get done well, people think a little differently about 40B. So we wanna make sure that the conditions in the comprehensive permit protect you to the maximum extent and give you the right to monitor this project. So that's my whole, if you think about my approach to 40B projects, that's how I look at it. Uh, short leash, uh, make sure it gets done right, and, um, nobody's ever gonna love, most of the 40Bs I work on, nobody ever loves them. When they get built, people say, well, you know, not as bad as I thought it might be. Uh, but that's the way I think you have to go at it. And you, it has to be in writing, and writing means that comprehensive permit, that amended and restated comprehensive permit and the plans. So that there's no, well, there are always gray areas. You're gonna try to reduce the gray areas to the maximum extent possible.
How do you propose we keep this short leash?
Uh, well, I think we, we wanna do that amended, first of all, in order to get final approval, there are certain conditions that exist in the comprehensive permit that the SJC, the Supreme Judicial Court, subsequently has ruled, don't fall within the domain of the ZBA. That it's a housing agency, subsidizing agency. So we wanna update those, there are some provisions in there in terms of local preference. So basically, you just wanna, you wanna have a good set of documents. I think that's the most important thing. And the regulatory agreement, you don't have, you don't have any say about that. The regulatory agreement is a sacred form, they don't even let the developer sort of fill in the blanks, basically. You send a, just fill them in and pencil them and they'll do it. You don't have any much say about that. The affirmative fair housing and marketing plan, you don't have say about that. What you do have say about, in the agency's requirements, in one of the most important aspects or requirements for a successful 40B is to, what, design it right, build it right, and most importantly is manager right. The applicant has said that Peapery Properties Inc. will be the manager and the leasing agent, they're, they're first, they're among the top ranked property managers for Mixed End Jump House. Now, you, you wanna make sure that there's some kind of a sort of guarantee that they're gonna be the agent. Now, I'm a little less concerned about that because the folks who have money involved with this, primarily MHP at that point, as the permanent lender, are gonna insist upon a qualified leasing agent to handle the affirmative fair housing and manager to protect their investment. It's critical for you because if a project is not rented in accordance with the affirmative fair housing plan, you cannot count those units on your subsidized housing inventory. The beauty of this as a rental project, as you're aware, is that although only twenty-five percent of the units are affordable units, as that term is defined, you get to count all one hundred unit, all eighty units, I'm sorry, or ninety-six units, whatever, whatever you decide. So that's how you protect yourself, and you hire someone like me to advise you.
Well, that's-
Very frankly.
That's more my question, I mean, you sort of gave this general, you wanna do this, you wanna do that. What I really wanna know is, how do we get the, you said you wanna do this, how do we do those things you said you wanna do?
Well, you, you have high standards in terms of, if you reference a set of plans, those are the plans that are referenced. And it's, it's very clear.
So I'd say over the last year, the problem we're having is, over the last year, we get a lot of, and every time, we have not received complete. Though some will say, we don't need to receive complete, we do. So until the plans are complete, until the documents are in order, in a way that a normal human being can digest them, not anyone else, just a digestible format where we can review it and say, you're modifying this, this is from this special permit, here's where, this is a modification to this, and it's not handed in a way, well, these do look like plans, but A and B aren't done, C's not totally complete, where it's the board's decision to either organize the documents, which is not, or try to figure out where the project's going.
Right, that's not, it's the applicant's job. Again, when I work with developers, there's nothing fancy, it's a three-leaf, I, I state that, I mean, I feel like I'm a, I didn't mention, but I've been teaching for thirty-five years too. I feel like I'm a teacher. Dean knows how to do it. It's a three-ring binder, you, they're indexed tabs, there's an index to it. The simpler, he can make it for you to review it and approve it, that's his job. And if you don't, it's like, if I got a paper and it doesn't meet my standard, I say, try again, okay? This, you can do better. Dean's right, 40B is based upon preliminary drawings. And if we were at the, sort of going through the initial comprehensive permit hearings, I'd feel less strongly about this. You're ready to pull a building permit, you should be ready to produce those drawings. The building inspector does not base his review on preliminary drawings. Now, it's true, you can argue that we're gonna appeal a building permit for the bigger building, a thirty-eight unit building, and we'll finish those drawings, and when we have to do B drawings, we'll finish those, when we have to do C, fine. As long as you have basic drawings for those at this point that can be referenced, that's okay. I can't- I can't, I can't require a recommend that require the developer to submit construction drawings for each of those buildings. But I can say, look, it makes sense if he really wants to get started to have those because he's going to need those for his final approval. And for sure, for his construction lender. Read the terms, what should give you some comfort. And what you should read is you should read the regulatory agreement, which Dean
We have provided in the past.
And you, they have that now. You should read the permanent loan commitment and you should read the construction loan commitment. And those two lenders are going to be tougher than you would ever be.
You have, you have a new binder.
Yeah. Let's step back. In an ideal world, I agree with 90% of what Ed said. And I have them in the same position as, and have been retained by MHP. And tonight, we're on different sides. So I understand exactly where he's coming from. What we have said is on building A and building B, it's always been our intention to provide the construction document for building permit requirements at a later date, right? Building C, which we are, have submitted to the town for the building permit, is a complete set of plans and is being reviewed by Chris, the building inspector, and the consultant hired by the town through that department. We have provided the loan commitment from MHP. We provided that over two months ago. We provided the updated Rockland commitment because we just got that on Friday. We need to go back for a revised commitment from MHP to get our final approval. Our final approval is not contingent upon having final construction documents. We have special conditions this time. And they were part of the management company, which we identified as PBD Properties. We have a letter from them. We've provided MHP, we also provided, I provided it in a package. I don't know if Ed's gotten to it yet. We've also identified a construction inspector that's required by MHP and by Rockland Trust. Ally has to hire, Mr. Ally had to hire a separate one, required by MHP to be paid on his loan.
And that person, I'm going to jump in. That person is a seasoned veteran, a guy named Matt Yarmanski. He's done work for MHP. I think it's fair to say, although Mr. Ally is paying for him and he's working to help Mr. Ally get this project built right, he's had a long relationship with MHP.
Are all these documents you're referencing in the binder that you provided?
Yes.
Yes. So his binder is still good, except that it went from 96 to 80.
Yes.
So the regulatory agreement, all that's in there?
Yes.
Yes.
Part of my frustration, I think, is the same frustration you all have. We do not know what set of drawings to be going from. We sat and met with Chris to determine which set of plans we should have for site engineering and which set of plans we should have for architectural. We have provided the site plan, engineered drawings by Mashando and Associates as part of that. Chris asked us to keep that set because that was a set that was referenced way back in the original amended permit and to amend those or revise those drawings. And he was satisfied, he was satisfied with us using Bertrand, Bertine, Bertine?
Burton Engineering.
Engineering to do those drawings. All I'm trying to do tonight is, like I said last time, formally request from 96 to 80 not to provide us with a comprehensive permit tonight, just to amend that, modify that number of units so we then can do the next stuff with MHP and so forth. We're not saying that this is done. We have many more things to do. I have more documents to provide to Mr. Marchand. But I wanted to also set up a set of documents from drawing standpoint, what we should be looking at going forward. And if there's something missing in that, I know there's a couple holes in A and B that we are working on. Other than that, I, we have, we believe we have a good set of drawings going forward to make our modifications.
He's showing what regulatory agreement is.
I have a question too. This was, I had emailed that I had sent a couple of, a couple of weeks ago, but these were just
Same thing.
I don't know if they are the same thing.
Building complete.
So I think I have copies for everybody if they want these. Do you all want these?
Every time there's something else and
Yeah, there's too much.
And it's three-ring binder with everything.
Do you want to pass some down?
And you submitted, they're going to be added to that.
Oh, I think you took one when you came in.
I agree. I think what we were trying to state tonight is let's start with the site plans, the engineer, the site engineering plans and architectural plans. We would then, as I put in my letter, I had talked to Mr. Marchand.
And then this one here.
Supply additional requested information. And then Mr. Marchand wanted to provide you a list of
Well, whoever can, I mean, I need one to keep
Quickly in there, that's not
Charlie.
Was that all on?
So I know where you're going with this and very, very good point. I want to make sure everyone hears it because I want to make sure it's stated one more time and it's on the record to be not doing this again.
This is my frustration. I didn't find it in there. And that's precisely the point. You said, oh, it's in that binder. Because I asked you three times, it's in the binder, it's in the binder, it's in the binder. I grabbed the binder, I handed it to you, you say I can't find it in there. This has been the recurring problem. Every time we say, where is this, oh, we provided that document to you and then we want a reference point for it. We can't get a reference point for it. I think Mr. Marchand's point is, couldn't be better. A nice concise three-ring binder that has all of these documents. So every time you say, we provided this to you, you can say, it's tab A, it's tab B, there's an index.
And I'm not disagreeing with that. I agree, that's been lacking. And that's part of the, why I wanted to start with a fresh slate with the drawings. I agree. We have provided stuff in the three-ring binder, but you also have met at times that I provided letters with attachments, which, that's what I'm not sure, the letters with my attachments have got into those three-ring binders.
Well, that's, so how do we remedy this? So we're, and my proposed remedy
Yep.
Is that we have a master three-ring binder. And even Mr. Marchand can weigh in on that because he's obviously done this before. So every time you submit something, sure, we have our separate three-ring binders, but you have that master binder that you submit something, we can all agree it gets added there. So whenever you say, hey, I gave this to you, you can say it's in tab B. We can find it in tab B. And if our own binders don't keep up to date, we all know the master binder has it there. So if you want to submit one of these, it can be stuck in a Mylar sleeve and that can be at a, a tab in B or something like that. But so every single person, you, Mr. Ali, Mr. Marchand, and all of us, and if somebody came to the town, could all know exactly where it is. So how do we accomplish that? Or, well, before I say that, Mr. Marchand, you want to
Yeah. I concur. After the last meeting, there was some material handed out. And after that, we found out that it was not being accepted for, because it wasn't supposed to be submitted to the building inspector. And there was some miscommunication. We wanted to get a fresh start. I want to start with the drawings, which I did. We put the complete set together. It's, you know, everybody's got the same set. Now, let's stay
Complete set for building C, not for the other buildings. So you're saying complete set of drawings.
A complete set of drawings that are applicable for your review for the changes, not for a building permit. There's a difference.
Not going for the building permit change.
Yeah. But what I'd like to know, you gave us a complete set of documents. That's great. Can you, you gave us that binder before, but that binder is obviously missing some. I get it, it happens. Let's just move beyond
No, no, no. I think we are, we are not taking the point right. The regulatory agreement came after the binder was mine, made. You can jump up and say that you don't have a final approval in the binder.
I don't care.
No, no, no.
It's happened enough. Stop. It's happened in the past. Who cares? No, stop! It's happened in the past. I get it. It was provided. You said it was coming later. I'm not concerned. The regulatory agreement was merely an illustration. I want to make sure that when we have this conversation in the future, we don't have this problem. So we can put all these things into a binder and then when you say, hey, I gave it to you, this is the document we should be talking about tonight, we'll know and we won't have to have these long conversations.
I do agree there. But regulatory agreement was, few people had asked and we gave it to the previous consultant. He told, it's not required because it's not being signed by the zoning board of our field.
We did provide for information
Yeah, he got that thing and he told you it's not required.
So I'm not concerned about the regulatory agreement. I was just thinking of an illustration.
Just telling that you have, you haven't done it doesn't make sense because that came afterward. After we submitted it by binder, that thing came in.
And we did submit it as part of the meeting. I think it gets more
So you have it on you for the date, so let's rectify this right now. Because I know when the binders were given to us, so let's rectify the date that you got the regulatory agreement. And you don't have a copy, but I'm guessing that it was submitted to the board in a time span or mayor with a letter attached. So let's just, let's just call it state to state because I'm not going to have an argument that is not productive.
No, I agree. I mean, I think what we're trying, I think the overall frustration by the board, which we have felt, is that it has not been an organized submission of documents that we have provided and which we do agree.
I think the simple solution is just give us a new binder.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with
But I'd like to try to Great, we're all the same.
We are not disagreeing about the new binder. I do agree, I told you initially, I provide everything what Mashando is telling and what board is telling. But to proceed with everything, to get my final approvals from all the other boards, that binder has to be full. So basically, I am asking for one change from 96 to 80. Let's get on the right foot, get that thing going and ask for what he wants it. Next meeting, he'll have a full binder, what he's asking for. And again, next, what all comes in, we have to add it into a master folder like what you are saying. I agree with you. I'm not disagreeing with anything. All I'm asking is to get one step ahead instead of going one step behind.
We've not forgotten your request. We know that you want to go from
If you want to deny, if you want to deny your question, fine.
96 to 80 is not a substantial change. That's what you want tonight. We understand that you want that. We've not forgotten. It's still on our minds.
Okay. And I agree with you.
That was not my intent, is to bypass the 96 to 80.
No, you can do it. You have rights to do it.
But my intent was not to bypass after the discussion. My intent was, I don't want to, 96 to 80 is, we'll call it issue A. Near and dear to your heart, I get it. But everything going forward, I want that master binder so we all know.
Yes, I agree with you there. I'm not disagreeing with it.
For example, no sync with my y'all later.
On March 16th, we addressed the board and provide you an update on the final approval from MHP. Because at the time, we submitted, previous meeting, we submitted, on April 15th, we submitted, the MHP is a subsidized agency, you approved the change to such guidance. Then on March, excuse me, that was in April. In March, at the time, we said the status of the above items for the completion for MHP's final review, that we would have to do four things. Property management company acceptable for MHP must be engaged by the sponsor. A clerk of the work susceptible to MHP must be engaged by the sponsor. MHP will engage a qualified construction inspector and satisfactory appraisal of the pre-permitted land value. Those were the items that were in the commitment letter for the final approval. At that meeting
Dean, I have to interrupt. Let's not confuse the term final approval. When I talk about final approval, it's the 40B of final approval as opposed to MHP's agreement to issue you a permanent mortgage loan.
No, no. This is the final, for MHP to issue the final 40B approval, those are the four requirements that they have. You can call Mr. Rockwell.
Dean, I'm not going to argue with you. You have to have a regulatory agreement.
So no, I just asked a question, so this is very simple. We just went back and forth for 10 minutes. I want to know the date and I want to see the regulatory agreement.
I will provide it.
So you do not have it with you?
I do not, in this binder right now, I do not have it.
Okay. So, very clear, I'm going to ask questions. I want answers. If the answer is I don't know or I don't have it, that's an answer. But the answer is not you received it on this magical date and somehow it appeared in my head. If I don't have the document, the document does not exist. If you submit something to modify something and you don't have the backup documents, it's not complete. That means it is incomplete and we don't have enough information to make an informed decision. So right now, I asked a simple question. The answer is, I do not have it. And I can tell you, I do not have it. I can tell you, it's not in the binders that were provided. And I can tell you, it was not provided us after the date the binders were given to us. That's it. That is factual. That is an actual answer. So going from 96 units to 80 units is the next part. Going forward, all the documents will be handed in a digestible format or they will not be reviewed.
I didn't need that.
Is that my water? I just have it anyways. No one has anything, right? Thank you very much. Does anybody want? No, I said God, Linda. I didn't say you could talk. All right. So, so we're going to, yes, God.
So as per what Mr. Benson said, we're going to have a master, a master binder, which everything will be sent to Toby. She'll put it in a master binder and make copies for all of us. And then would be objected to put it into our own binder? Is that
You shouldn't
She's not making, she's not making master copies. There is going to
You could, you could say, if, as they stay here, you decide how many copies you need. You don't need to make copies.
No. And just like this was, that's what provided. Going forward, we, every member of this board would have a copy. There'd be a copy in the office and a copy for Toby. That's what the request, requested is. Oh, I'm sorry. And a copy for you, Ed. Going forward, Toby would be responsible for the master copy as we're receiving those
For maintaining.
For maintaining it. We will be responsible, so we will not ask again for another copy of the binder. But the binder will only contain information that has been presented to the board, not entertain in what, any fashion, things that we want to do in the future that I have to go 200 pages and figure out, you're going to put 27 maples, trees, and a, I don't know, a shed somewhere because it somehow was in the binder. And in my spare time, I had to read it 12 times to find the shed. That's not going to happen. It's going to be documents that are official documents that are presented to the board. Anything new will be added during meetings. Does anyone disagree with that?
I think that's awesome.
I think if you maintain a mirror binder, then you can always say, turn to page A. And if you submit something, this should go in tab B. So we're all knowing where it goes.
Permit me to suggest, due to the potential number of tabs or exhibits, that you number them and not letter them. I think we might go past 26. And so rather than going A, 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 A.
All right, so you can't, you just got to go first because she's Linda.
Thank you. Back to the first issue where I do believe I heard Mr. Marchand say that he did not feel as though it was a substantial change on the decrease from 96 to 80 units. And under the 760 CMRs, it considered under 4C3, that a reduction in the size of the site of more than 10% in excess of any decrease in the number of houses proposed. So I think he was on to something when he wanted to, you know, decide what happened to lot 3 and whether that separation when you did the A and R took three, almost three acres away from the 9.2 site. And you put the single house on the line. I think it left us with 5.3. I think that would trigger a decrease in the size of lot of less than 10%. And under that same rule, it would also, the 96 to 80 units is minus 16. I'm not, my math isn't great, but I do believe that 9.6 would trigger a 10% decrease. And if you subtract it And if you subtract it, you'd get sixteen units. So that would, those two reasons, that would be considered, I think, at your discretion, a substantial change and also a change in tenure, housing tenure, which I brought up before.
There's no? I'm sorry. I love you. Tenure, there's no, tenure in ownership versus rental. There's, there's no, there has been no change in tenure here.
Okay, only just that it was low affordable income housing tax credits, you know, was a hundred and twenty-three units. And now it's twenty-five percent.
That's not tenure.
Okay.
And the specific reason I asked about the status of lot three is that I did do that calculation. And if in fact lot three had been subtracted from the site, the change would have been greater than ten percent, that would have been much.
Sorry.
Ten percent greater than the decrease in the, in the number of units. But it's a non-issue, it's a non-issue now. What everybody wants is lot three to remain in the site with a deed restriction or conservation restriction. So you're getting the same size lot with nineteen, with sixteen fewer units.
So if lot three is still included, then there's no change in the lot size, no change in excess of ten percent.
And when you.
For that, right?
When you signed the plan, you took the acreage away from the project, that didn't change it? Because now.
We didn't sign any.
No, through the chair, that was already approved. That plan was already approved, it was not a change. It was already approved from the HAC decision, from the previous decision, through the chair.
That's right. No, he's right. Nine point eight two acres, the whole project was approved with that being taken over. So that it's been separated, as long as the use stays in perpetuity, it's natural and it doesn't do a solar project or you don't clear cut the whole lot, then I think that would be considered.
I'm sorry, I'm going to jump in here. There's going to be a lot to discuss. This is a non-issue. If you vote that this is an insubstantial change, you'll reference the fact there has, there is no change, you'll reference the number of acres, you probably put right in that that lot three remains.
Thank you. So, your, your other issue is, he was allowed to build ninety-six, but he's only going to build eighty?
And it's a ten percent decrease.
And you don't like that?
Well, it's a substantial change. I was just finding that.
Do you think it's bad?
You should be able to vote on that, you know, to make a decision that.
Do you want ninety-six instead of eighty?
No, no, no.
Would you rather have eighty?
No.
Than ninety-six? If those are the choices.
So my point is that I think that there are some things that can be looked at that may be substantial and that there's time to allow. It says that you have thirty days to hold a decision in a hearing and make a decision within forty of that. And it sounds to me like if you don't make that decision tonight, you have to make it within twenty days or vote on it your next meeting.
We're working on it.
All right, so, just because it's ten, almost ten-ten. I'm going to calm it down to two minutes. I want to be respectful of everyone's time, but I, you know, we've been doing this for a while, I've been getting pretty good at it. Two minutes of my time is there.
My question is just this, if we're reducing the units, would you consider making the building, a two-story building and taking off?
That's what we did.
No, did you go down to a three-story? You want from a four to a three?
It is three stories. Basement and two floors.
Would you peel off the last one?
No, it's basement floor and two stories. We have, we have three stories.
How many units are on the top floor? Eight?
Sixteen units on the big unit.
On your floor?
Yeah.
Would you take off those, the top ones, just so that's not?
I did already.
I know, I want to go again, I want you to do more. Would you? Would you is the question?
You can request it.
I mean, just, this is the biggest building in the project and that would make it a little less substantial in the.
So you want me to go up on the other two buildings?
I'm not there yet. I want this one to be less substantial.
So you asking for fewer, you, I don't understand what you're saying. You want fewer units?
I want that to be less substantial. So you take it down, yeah, that three, two stories, it would solve some parking problems, it would solve, solve a bunch of other issues.
What parking problems?
I'm just going to have a parking.
We don't have any parking problems. We have nothing there.
What's going on?
So what you're saying is, however many units are in that top floor, you want to remove the top floor and in doing so also remove those units?
Yes, and you have two walk-in floors, which is better for a lot of reasons. You don't, nobody has to go up these stairs to get to that third level. Do I, do I have two minutes yet?
Yeah, you don't.
All right, then I just need my answer.
Who has to answer?
The person who do it.
The chairman has to answer, not me.
But she could just say yes. She could say yes, absolutely.
She can look.
All right, so, does anyone else? Yes, I'm very sorry, he jumped in front of you.
He always does.
All right, so you go ahead.
The only suggestion I would make is to have a binder that's available to the public.
You will, because if there's one thing I want, that would be, I don't know where they hold things here. Right in the office, right here, glass windows.
No, it's the ZBA, it works with ZBA.
I think that's always locked though.
Like in the town clerks. It's supposed to be in the town clerks.
So we're going to put it in the town clerks with the women that run the building over here. So they'll have it, you guys can come in and look at it. When am I going to have that?
When?
When I, why, when I, tomorrow? When am I going to, you're going to give me those binders?
I just got a list from Ed Manchin today. Maybe in ten days.
Ten?
Yeah.
I got to make it.
Can we have at least ten days? If we can get two, we'll get it two.
I can give one more, one binder made, any, but we have all the data, what he has looked for it, right?
Yeah, I want to come, I want to get all my correspondence with my attachments, my emails in order to provide.
Okay.
I didn't say you were.
Ten days seems fine, so ten days, Toby wrote that. Because we know I don't have it. Nine days, I'm going to email everyone.
I think it was a no on the third story coming off.
Well, that, yeah.
Get out, sorry.
Get out.
All right, so, anyone else on, no? Can I, on anything, I don't know.
Ninety-six to eighty.
Ninety-six to eighty. Do you have any public comment? I can't tell you what to say because that wouldn't really work out. Public comment, I'm moving from ninety-six units down to eighty units. No objection to this. How about sixty?
Sixty-four would be a legitimate.
Not an option, sorry.
Yeah, how many houses in Hopefield?
Yeah.
How many houses are in Hopefield now? Not as many, it's going to go in.
I mean, I have to jump in. There is an approved comprehensive permit for ninety-six units. If he did all his work, he could pull a building permit as soon as it's signed off and as soon as he has final approval. This is about a request for two modifications, to reduce the number of units from ninety-six to eighty and to make a minor adjustment in the unit mix. That's all that's on the table right now. That's the only thing on the table. And in terms of other changes, those will probably be the most dramatic changes. There'll be some other, what I refer to as housekeeping changes. There'll be some sort of keeping the lease short changes that I hope you can sort of get into this amended and restated decision. But otherwise, those are the significant changes.
Could I just ask you a question, please? You know, I can understand all this business. It's his property, he's got, he's got the approval for the ninety-six units. What about the people who are living next door, in front of, beside these units? Shouldn't they receive some respect to their privacy? Their homes, their dignity, rather than putting up chicken coops and barracks? I mean, isn't there some respect that the citizens of the area should have? This is a darling little village. I've been here sixty-five years. It was a curious old place, it was six hundred when we arrived. I don't think there are a hundred, a hundred units in this town. And here we're putting in this monstrosity.
I've been to the site.
Yeah.
But again, it's, forty B gives some extraordinary benefits to a developer who can ask for waivers. That ship has left. I mean, I've got to be really blunt here. This concession, when I went out to the site, I took a look and I asked about which sort of neighbors would be most impacted. And the reason I think Mr. Ali is taking the level off of this building is that this building is the building that appears to impact neighbors the most. And that's why I was insisting upon making sure that lot three remained on the site, on the forty B site. So that, I, I understand, and if I lived where you lived, I feel exactly the same way.
You know, everything's in his favor, nothing is to the neighbors.
But the decision was done, it was appealed, the HAC has made a determination. And this board does not have the authority to sort of counter that. If he could come in and ask for, instead of ninety-six units, a hundred and six units, then the board would say that's a substantial change, reopen the hearing, have the hearing, file the decision, get an appeal, go to the HAC, we just sort of continue the process. So I, um, it's not going to eliminate it, it's going to make it a little less, um, in your face. That's all. And that's not, I, I just, I'm here, I'm just a consultant to the board explaining how forty B work.
It's just so disrespectful to the neighbors, to the neighborhood, the people who have worked their tails off, who pay their taxes, who go to town meetings, who come to boards like this, who volunteer in the town. And it just seems as though everyone of the neighbors is getting a slack on their face for these barracks. And, you know, look what's gone on in Auburn. The same thing can happen in West Rose too. God forbid. But, you know, they say it's two bedrooms. There's a two-bedroom unit in Auburn and they've got sixty-seven people living in it, which is absolutely disgusting. Who's going to monitor the bed? Nobody's monitoring it in Auburn, no one's monitoring.
That will be seriously monitored here by people.
Right, of course.
But thank you.
How many bodies does this mean, would be added to the population? You get so many bedrooms, how many bodies?
I was going to say, I kind of want to, just because we've kind of drummed this topic, it's beyond the scope of what we're looking at tonight. And I know this kind of goes back and forth, but tonight, we're just looking at two things. Well, one thing, moving from ninety-six units to eighty.
In the unit mix.
In the unit mix, which is changing. I think that top floor was all three family, three-bedroom units.
One building was all three.
We had fourteen, we had fourteen three-bedroom units, we are changing it to six two-bedrooms.
And eight three-bedrooms.
Three bedrooms.
So even that is a decrease, right?
Yes.
That's on page two of the letter.
So it's, it's really a decrease in terms of the density of the development. So most boards I would work with and neighbors would say, you know, we still don't like it, but this is better.
MHP is the one that basically approves the management company?
Yes.
Okay, so when the management company, if, if this development goes through and the management company comes in, will MHP monitor the management company to make sure that everything is being managed completely?
Yes, they'll, they'll, well, they'll do inspections.
And so.
They're the lender, they're the senior lender, they're at risk and they're going to monitor the operations of the project. They're going to review the financials. They have all the amount of looms.
The proposed loan amount is, um.
So ten million dollar loan amount. Ten million plus, it'll go down slightly because of the fund that exists.
So just to be clear, what you're looking for tonight is, from your letter, items one, two, and three, which is total count ninety-six to eighty, building A modification from fourteen three bedrooms to six two bedrooms and eight three bedrooms. And building C reduced from fifty-eight units to thirty, I'm sorry, from fifty-four to thirty-eight.
And based on the revised cycle and because of the reduction in units, currently there's a hundred and seventy-two.
I don't want to talk about party spaces. I want to talk about what we're doing tonight and tonight only, which is one, two, and three on your list.
Actually, there's three things on the list, right?
One, you have five things on your list. And you said that to help move the process forward with the regulatory or vending agency, whoever it is. All I need is not us.
Any three.
All I need is the unit mix, the unit count, one, two.
And three.
And three.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we can leave with.
Yeah, we can leave with the three.
Okay, does anybody think ninety-six is better than eighty?
No.
Who said yes? I heard a yes.
We're not, we're not moving the audience.
All right, and move to close public comment.
Start getting comment?
Are you going to keep?
All, what?
You can, you can discuss in the motion.
Oh, Mark asked if he'd be willing to chop off a floor and reduce that.
No, I want to go back to ninety-six.
That's the right answer.
That's the right answer. Hey, Mike?
Hey, I'm just asking.
I'm just telling.
Well, then if that gets us out of this meeting.
So, there was a motion to close?
And a second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment is now closed.
I moved that we deem the changes outlined in the August twentieth letter requesting modifications to the comprehensive plan. Bottom of page one and the top of page two, items one, two, and three.
We don't have to deal with two, right? Because two has to be a building.
Insubstantial.
No, you have to, you want to do all of them.
Oh, okay.
It's the mix. That we deem those insubstantial.
This is one, two, and three.
And I will further elucidate that it's a reduction of ninety-six units in total to eighty units in total, that changes to building A and changes to building C.
Is Belton suspenders reference lot three?
That lot three remains.
That lot three remains, that there shall be.
No changes.
There will be no reduction.
That's not part of this request.
That's not part of the.
Oh, I know it's not part of the request.
We are not asking for that.
We'll submit a letter, Steve, based on that we will, lot three's, we haven't taken it out. There's no need to make a vote on it.
But you can't, you can't, you can't ask after this, because if you do, this is going to become a substantial change.
Oh, I see.
So.
So condition on lot three.
Condition on lot three remaining as a deed restricted, conservation restricted, whatever the term was.
That's okay, that's okay, yeah, I'm okay.
I'm going to have to rephrase my motion, but that's mine. Whoa, let's clarify.
Subject two.
So subject to lot three remaining part of the project, part of the deal?
Part of the forty B, subject forty B development. With its, whatever terminology you use, it's conservation restricted. It's a deed conservation.
You have to have a conservation.
I don't want to create something new.
No, you're not.
Do you want to fill out the actual? I'm just going to give it to you to actually, can you fill out?
No, I understand, we've got several lawyers.
None of whom are experts in your field.
It's on the plan. Oh, so you need to.
I don't want it to go against what was originally allowed in the wording in the original permit about lot three. I don't know if it says conservation agreement, if it's needed over to, um, a different agency.
What we want, what I think the board wants assurance on is that there will be no development on lot three.
With lot three dealt with as stated. I would see, this is why I need the binder, as stated in where? With Lot Three dealt with as stated, I would see, this is why I need the binder, as stated in where, in what? Where does it say Lot Three?
Well, on the plan that I looked at, it said it was a non-buildable.
This is the food plan.
I don't want to refer to a plan where it's a simple decision. So it's the comprehensive permit, if it's the amended comprehensive permit, if it's the appealed, approved, translated, permit. Whatever the heck it's called, that's what I want to refer to.
This is the K and R plan.
I want to give you what you want, please make it easy for me.
Some three is one.
This is the, yeah.
Yeah.
Non-buildable lot is proposed to be gifted to the town of West Boylston to be held for ever and charitable trust for conservation purposes. So we don't...
And that's what I read.
Yeah, that's the one.
That's not a conservation.
I want to dig the investigation.
Did it say, did it say deeded to the town?
Deeded to, gifted to the town.
Gifted to the town. Is that going to affect the, is that take it out of the forty B project if this is being gifted to the town?
I don't think the town will want that.
I don't, I, I think that the substance of the matter is that, taking that into consideration, you would not consider this a substantial change.
Well, no, no, that's all well and good, but whether or not this remains part of the project is a concern, because one of the issues is acreage.
I'm just using common sense here.
You're saying, John, that the project goes down by three acres, or however big it is, that that's, that that could then become a substantial change.
We'd have to ask that as a modification, to take that out. Right now it's in the...
Would you ask for the money to get changed?
Yeah, I mean, it's part of the project, so if we ask to take it out, that would only, that would affect the overall ten percent.
If that were the case, you'd put a conservation, you'd put a deed restriction prohibiting any development on that lot?
I don't think anybody wants development on the lot, I don't think that's, that's the issue. I think, you said at the beginning that this remains part of the forty B project. What did you mean by remains part of it?
That that acreage remains part of it.
Remains part, okay, so my question is, as it's written, that it's being gifted to the town, does that change whether or not this is part of the forty B project? This is the panel.
Technically, uh, yes, but what I might say is, we didn't, we shouldn't have counted that, we're going to treat it the same, we're going to treat it equally. We're not going to add it and then subtract it and, and create an issue. We're going to say, well, the original lot was only X, so we're not reducing it beyond that.
I understand you're, you're talking about the, the, whether it's a substantial change or not, but there is some concern that this remain part of the forty B project, because we want the maximum amount of acreage to be part of forty B, so, because the town is approaching a point where we would need our acreage, uh...
Your one and a half percent.
Yeah. So we, that's a concern, if this gets taken out of the forty B project. So we want to make sure that we're not doing something that takes us further away from our acreage.
We, we don't have, I don't think there's any disagreement between the board and the applicant on this. If you can agree to language that satisfies, that keeps those three acres in your count, um...
I think you're right. I, I just don't want to vote on something and not have, I, I think you're right. I think we are in agreement with Mr. Ali on this, I just want to make sure the language is, is, I don't want to inadvertently remove something. Everybody agrees it's not going to be buildable, we're all happy that it's not buildable, we inadvertently remove it from the count to the town's detriment. Sure, it's, it's non-buildable, everybody would be thrilled with it not being buildable, but... Can I make a suggestion? The total acreage including that lot, which we provided for, is basically nine point ten acres, nine point one acres. So if we put language in that, that this reduction is based on a total of nine point one acres. If we change any of the acreage going forward, whether it's the undisturbed piece or we carve off something else, that modification will become null and void. See what I'm saying? The nine, nine point one includes that possible three.
Does it include the town one?
No, no, there's nothing.
My, my issue with this is, here's, here's my issue, so just, just to bring us back, so we're not modifying that. That is in the original decision. We're referencing what's stated currently. So we're saying, as of tonight, the three items that you're going to say, and this goes unchanged based on the documentation that's been provided to us, we're not making a decision tonight saying that this is removed, we're just restating what is already, what's stating it, though removes it.
However, if you look at this plan that was submitted tonight, do you see Lot Three?
No.
No. So you could say this was submitted. This is the plan we're talking about.
What is another benefit?
Here's that plan. This is not, this is Lot Three, that's not included.
Because there was no changes to that, to that lot.
Well, you show the property line the same way then, if there are no changes. You don't show a different, I would make an argument that you just approved a plan that did not include Lot Three.
We're not asking to approve that plan. We're not asking.
You submitted it. Don't submit stuff that's inaccurate.
It's not inaccurate.
It is accurate. I think I disagree with you on that. This is not a lot plot plan, this is just for hydrants and this one.
Okay.
This is not a plot plan.
We don't have any disagreement here. We'll have plenty of disagree, we might have plenty of disagreement.
Lighting plan, landscaping plan, it's just for the project, not for the whole thing.
We don't want anything that is gray. We want things black and white.
You have a black and white complete sector.
All right.
I don't, I don't think we've got a...
I disagree with you.
I think...
No, no. Go ahead, David.
When the comprehensive permit, I'm not, I think I'm right about this. The comprehensive permit was, was approved, it was approved for nine point eight-two acres, okay? All right, now according to what, what West Boylston has for affordable eligible lands, that nine point eight-two acres that's part of Oakdale brings us to a total of fifty-eight one, fifty-eight point one acres, which meets that one percent minimum on the SHI. If you take away that three acres of land, that puts us below what the, what they require as far as acreage. And that would put us below the one percent. So I think that that three acres has to be part of the project, because that's how the comprehensive was permit was approved, with the total acreage. So to take away that three acres, wouldn't that be considered a substantial change?
Like, if, if he tried to do that, but he's not going to try to.
So why do we need to?
So maybe you don't, I'm going to go back, I may revise mine, because I think it's created more problems than it's worth. He's on record as saying, and Dean's on record in the existing comprehensive...
I can't, hold on, I can't hear. And I'm still running the news, just a little tired. So everyone stop talking, but here.
He's on record, the stip, decision for stipulation at the HAC is on record referencing the site that includes the acreage for that. So in order to change that, he'd have to come back for change. That would be, and, and where it gets tricky, as I explained before, all of a sudden now the project is at eighty units. He's not looking for, well, that's right, there's no reduction in units, so they'd be eliminating that three acres, so that would be an issue.
Well, you just lost me at that last piece there. Can I, can I offer something, well, do a hypotheticals here? We submitted with my letter tonight, let me use my copy, just grab something quick so we can get out of here. We attached a summary, which I presented the last time, that shows the land use summary. We have the buildingable area, the drives, sidewalks, the maintained open space, and the undisturbed open space, which includes Lot Three area to be gifted to the town, it has, but does not include the existing house lot. So we're saying, I'm not changing any of the total square footage of this property. We're not asking to change the square footage. I understand what Ed was saying, if you change it, you drop it, it's going to change the ten percent. We're not asking that. We're, all I'm saying is, we're asking based on the number of units being reduced. I, I think, yeah.
Please act on what you've requested.
Yeah, that's all we're requesting.
I think you're okay approving one, two, and three. And I would not accept that drawing, or I put a note on it, that property, this drawing doesn't include Lot Three, which is included in the property.
That, that drawing was submitted for the retaining wall plan only, you're not submitting that as a site plan. If you looked at my letter...
Those are, the retaining walls, landscaping, it's not, nothing to do with the site plan.
This is the third, look, the third drawing here is titled what?
Change it, site plan.
Site plan, doesn't include Lot Three.
This is the site plan for, site plan for hydrants and electrical plan.
That's what I, that's on my letter, that's what's referenced on the letter. If you think there's a, we can clean it up, Ed.
Clean it up and show the property line.
The letter references for electrical plan only.
Hold on.
It's supposed to be here.
Refer to my letter.
Yep, show me where that is.
Right on, right on here. Site plan, retaining more layout plan provided by Burton, landscape plan provided by Burton, electrical and hydrant, hydrant plan prepared by Burton dated May twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen. With reference in site plans, so site plans are...
There are always arguments about narrative in plans. The site plan should show the entire site.
Sometimes you cannot show the entire site plan because you have to eliminate few things also, you can focus on the exact site plan.
Call it a partial whatever.
We have submitted, we submitted the plans tonight to have a set of style.
A site plan is a site plan.
All right, hold on, I, I can't hear, I don't know who else can hear. It's getting near past ten-thirty. I know everyone, I will not take calls on this because I do have my first year meeting. But, can, can I? I, I will say right now, you, yet again, we do not have, I was told thirty times, we were told every which way, we hit the finals, everything's there. Now, not only do, are we frustrated, but now you've already frustrated, Ed, this is his first meeting, we just want lots of...
Well, I, I, we, we're frustrated, because we're, you're taking, this is being taken out of contents right now. We are submitting a set of plans that is, so we can go forward for reviews. If Ed wants to look at the plans and say, I think that plan should have, be referred to as a fire hydrant electrical plan, and he wants X, Y, and colored in pink and purple, we'll do it, let him make the comment.
I think we agreed to it.
But to stand up here to say that we're...
We're not arguing on that.
Okay, I don't think that we should reference your letter, because you incorporate the plans by reference. What I think we should do is give you your unit changes, give you the unit reduction, without saying, as shown on plan, blah, blah, blah. Just, yes, you can change your total units from ninety-six to eighty. You can change your building A from fourteen three-bedrooms to six two-bedrooms and eight three-bedrooms. You can change your building C from fifty-four units to thirty-eight units. You okay with that?
That's all I'm looking for. That's what the letter says.
No, it's not what it says, it's blah, 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 don't tell me that.
Perfect, that's perfect.
Okay, okay.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Second.
Hold on, Kelly.
Hold on.
How about the mix of the units? Can they change it?
Yes, well, they can change it, but...
If the building C, all three...
They can change it. You can determine that to be an insubstantial change, therefore approve it. It will be subject to review by the subsidizing agency. There's a new rule in forty Bs that at least ten percent of the units have to be three-bedroom units. But you're going to have, how many three-bedroom units deemed, no?
Eight.
Eight? Eight.
Exactly.
So that new rule won't apply. It's fine.
I need to amend my, my motion. I need to amend my motion. I said approved, and I should have said is deemed insubstantial.
Yes, so let's...
Would you accept my...
Sure, but approved.
So, no, 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 I don't accept that. So please restate, so everyone can hear you, including me who's sitting personally, I'm sorry. What exactly you're thinking about before, then we'll go through the full...
I move...
Hold on, so during this time, no one's going to file paperwork, being you two, so leave it alone. Go ahead.
I move that we find insubstantial the change from ninety-six units to eight acres. The change in building A from fourteen three-bedroom units to six two-bedroom units and eight three-bedroom units. And the change to building C in the reduction of fifty-four units to thirty-eight units.
Second. Did somebody write this down? Toby, you writing that down?
Am I, no, it's here, yeah.
Okay, um, can you read it back?
Okay, um...
I'm sure we actually got it right.
Oh, well, there's part of it that I, I've got to look up on the letter.
Yeah.
Your motion is that we find insubstantial the change from ninety-six units to eighty units in building A. Now, that's where I lost you, the number of...
That's okay.
So, fourteen three-bedrooms, fourteen three-bedrooms, to six two-bedrooms and eight three-bedrooms.
On the third page, yeah.
And he has them front of him, so all in, so I have a motion, I have a second by Mr. Phenia. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the vote sheet will go through. Anyone opposed?
You okay with that, Mr., this is what you think is appropriate?
Building C, fifty-four.
Okay.
I'll join that.
Now, that's being filled out, so I do want to discuss, there's, there's a few topics on here, but the fact that we're running this late, we're going to have to consolidate these. So, Ed, if you would just give us some thoughts, I'm going to reach out to our council, town council, to draft a amended and restated comprehensive permit. Is that, who would do that for us, or?
I think so.
Okay, so I'm going to reach out to town council tomorrow morning and ask for a, actually...
And in order to do that, and they probably already have, the original permit, the stipulation, all of the above, any other amendments, extensions. So that would be a great help for everybody. If they could do a draft, then you give it to the applicant, of course, allow them to review it.
And it will be privy to everyone else to see as soon as we have it.
Number four, I think is important.
Discussion of application request for mod, modification.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm on the my list.
Discussion of agenda and scheduled future meetings with the applicant.
No, he's looking at his list, not your list.
Oh.
We basically, you did want...
Number four, outline building specifications for all three buildings.
Right, and I think Dean said he would get us that.
When we get back to us, I'll update you.
Ten days, we do.
Yeah, we, we just saw that tonight. I will, whatever I can get to you, I'll get to you by ten days. If not, I'll have an explanation why we do not have it by then. I'm not sure, I don't, I just can't say I have it, but it might be something for, that I can't get until I...
Can we, can we outline a little bit more specify, specifications, what you're looking to?
Because it talks about what the exterior building materials will be, when you had a roof re-shingle, you're going to use...
MHP has that. Okay, that's fine, we can do that. That's okay.
It's an outline.
Four is okay.
Given how everything's going tonight, I'm not going to agree, just give it to me in ten days, if I haven't seen it.
Well, I want the binders in ten days, in ten days I want to know where you're at with this. So if you want to read through them very quickly, number five.
Number five, I just wanted to make sure I didn't know how it worked, those drawings are... Number five. I just wanted to make sure I didn't know how it worked. Those drawings that Maschiano did were dated originally two thousand nine, latest revision date was ten. But he signed and stamped them on December fourteenth. If I did work, um, six years ago, um, I'm not expected it to begin within a year. I don't know if there've been any DEP best management practice changes. I, I think the board would like to get a letter or Chris, that Maschiano says, yeah, these can be used for construction. That's all.
Well, well, Justin.
No, this, this, they had given it already, signed it on twelve, seven, fourteen-
I said that.
Saying this is a construction document.
Okay.
He doesn't say it is-
I'm sorry, Ali, I'm gonna go overboard.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna say, if you could, if Maschiano writes a letter that just says, yeah, these are okay for construction today.
He doesn't work for me. He may not do it.
Well, he signed, he stamped them on the fourteen.
Yeah, he stamped it on the-
So that to me is very confusing. Why would he plans for the tenth and then stamped on the fourteenth? Unless someone called him and had him stamp it, so do you-
I just wanna offer, when I, when I was researching for the A and R, I called them and asked him questions like, can you tell me anything about this project or anything with drawings? And he said that he is not on the project anymore and he wasn't really interested in doing anything more for that. I mean, it, it might be hard to get that. Not that I don't think we should draw it, I don't, I don't think it's easy.
Well, I just, I've worked on projects, particularly in terms of, this is, there are resource areas here, you had to get an order of-
We don't have any. We don't have any resource area here.
There's no order of conditions?
No order of conditions.
So you're not obligated to do best management practices?
All I have to do is storm management. DCR is looking into it, and I have a storm management permit already submitted.
Okay.
Part of this is, unfortunately, Mr. Mashak coming in late. I think some of the frustration with Mr., Mr. Ali is that we've been through some of these questions with Mr. Heaton, with the building inspector, with the board, and now once again, we're trying to deal with this in a public forum. While it can't be addressed, it is continuing wind-up issues that we've already addressed. So could I suggest that we meet with Mr. Ed Mashak, go through his list and work on his list and get him what he needs? And with that, to meet with Mr., um-
And that's not, so, meeting with the building inspector outside of that. Um, I, I, I do need something. So he signed something four years after putting these plans together. He magically didn't wanna work with us, but signed and stamped these plans four years later? No. So that seems, and I have no interest. So, so this is, this to me is very confusing. So in December of two thousand fourteen, was he employed by you, and that's why he signed and stamped these?
No, I'll tell you. It was signed and stamped on December fourteenth, and but the-
One year.
All the dated-
December two thousand-
Two thousand fourteen, but all the plans dated on the page-
Two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten. It says right here. He didn't change any of the plans. Basically, he certified saying that these plans have not been changed. Agreed.
Well, shouldn't they be stamped and signed in two thousand ten?
No, this was done already.
Oh, no, no, no. He had, he had stamped them earlier. This was an updated, I assume he stamped them back in two thousand nine.
So it should be on there somewhere?
And this is an updated. Well, this is updated.
Okay.
There is a letter from, uh, what engineering firm is that, who reviewed this plan? There is already a review in the year who reviewed quite a time.
Maybe I'll put it this, VHB is very capable.
That's good.
They have a peer reviewer. Could the board please ask, send a note to VHB asking, stating that the plans were stamped in twenty fourteen, however, the last revision date was two thousand ten. Have there been any changes that would, that should be reflected? They'll, VHB will know. They do this all the time.
Okay. So next one.
Okay, um, you covered the most important changes. I said there were gonna be some housekeeping changes.
Yeah.
That's what I think Dean will look at and ask as he reviews the amended and restated decision. And if there have to be changes, that's the way it can be done. And you can put them all together, the board can review them and say, insubstantial.
We needed a sense to deal with the other requested changes later, so that we don't run off to the twenty days.
Yes.
We, we will provide-
We need that signed tonight.
Yeah.
You wanna draft, we need to sign something.
I need to sign tonight, saying that I'm extending that thing. That shouldn't be a problem.
Any changes other than the three that were included in the vote?
Yes. But that's, excuse me, that's one of the items we will not have in ten days. Because we're not gonna be at the point to review the amended comprehensive plan, so that's why I was-
But in ten days, you're gonna tell me where you're at?
Yes, that's why, I agree, I will do that.
Just regular paper?
Yeah, just.
Okay, um-
Number seven.
Seven, I am always concerned about ADA requirements, and-
ADA requirements are, just in case anyone here doesn't know?
Uh, hink cap access, architectural barriers, or architectural access, variable.
Okay, so what do you-
Well, at some point, or there'll, there'll be a statement in the amended and restated that applicant must satisfy, so you've got it. VHB will review the engineering plans for that, and for the buildings, uh, your building inspector will review for ADA. Plus, normally, you ask for a certification from the architect. And the lender is gonna ask for that regardless. So there is no order of conditions?
No.
Okay, so number eight-
No red lines.
Ne- number eight is inaccurate.
Yeah.
There is no order of conditions. Uh, the final pro forma, Dean sent me the one stop, but, uh, would, you would like to see whatever it is for the eighty unit development.
That will be a final approval, you'll have it. We have it for ninety-six already.
Right.
But you'll have it for eighty after they approve it.
That's fine. The MHP, we've already talked about the regulatory reform. Dean did send that to me, um, but he's gonna include that in the binder. The permanent loan, uh, oh, that's revised, and now that you voted, it'll be on the eighty unit.
Yeah.
They're gonna have to get that. The Rockland Trust, that's already based upon the eighty.
We got it.
Number twelve, that was submitted. I thought it would be in your interest to list all the protection that the construction lender and the permanent lender wants in terms of making sure construction gets done right. So that's number thirteen. Yamalinsky, the bank inspector, all of that. Confirmation of Peabody, I read that Peabody Properties letter. It's probably good enough for now. I'm less concerned because there's a, there's a condition in the MHP commitment letter that says they must approve the property manager. And they have the same interest that you have in getting a quality property manager. And for now, we're assuming it's gonna be Peabody. There's, until the contract is signed, there's no guarantee on that. And then final approval, remember, you cannot, Chris cannot issue a building permit until the applicant has final approval from the subsidizing agency. That's, that's right in their commitment agreement. It's been, it's been gray in terms of site work. Projects have proceeded without final approval on site work. And site work's already been underway.
Clarify, just to make sure he gets the information that was submitted to the board. Should I just resend correspondence with, that address some of these items?
Well, this is gonna be in the binder.
You want it?
I'd just as soon get it all, it's easier for me to go through the binder too, because I-
So let's talk about the gray area, about the site work. That is very important for me also. On the site work, we have started site work already.
Well, I know, I was up there. But at a minimum, VHB has to complete its review of those plans.
Okay, good.
Uh, well, that's what I would say.
Yeah.
I, what I would rather say is you should get final approval. But given that you've already begun the work, already cleared the site, you're gonna proceed, you're gonna get VHB approval, a peer review.
Yeah.
And I think that's adequate.
Is VHB-
There are some in future forty Bs, I would, I would put in a, I would have a condition that says, no construction, including site work, shall commence until evidence of a final, final approval from the subsidizing agency.
We had a building permit done as well.
Yeah, I know. Um, other topics, respective roles, let's skip that for now. Uh, the chair already is, is taking action on the amended and restated, and then agenda and schedule for future meetings. In terms of what the agenda should-
Before, before we jump onto the agenda, I think number one is very important, because there seems to be confusion and miscommunication. So, everything goes through the board. Um, this is actually a board that will vote on the different things, but all the documentations come to us. We don't get them scattered, they don't go to the building inspector, they don't go to different, th- those documents are actually for us and for the public. They don't go to anyone else outside of that, just because it's very confusing.
Yes, I, I want to clarify on that thing. Any approved document, approved documents will come, not the building department gets their own, they have work separate.
Yes, and that is-
Or the building permit.
Nothing-
To do with the ZB.
Exactly. But agenda and scheduled future meetings. So we do have a meeting coming up on the seventeenth of next month.
Can we keep it first?
So, I will not be in attendance during that meeting.
So can we preponder the meeting?
I think I'm gonna be out of the country that day.
Um, so my, I, the meeting will still stay on because you will be running the meeting.
Good thing.
If we lose her for a meeting.
No problem. The, the, these are administrative hearings. There, there was no requirement for-
These are not hearings.
Yeah.
Public hearing tonight.
There's no requirement.
So-
This is to, this is like weekly, this is like having job meetings. If you don't have a date-
It's a status.
I don't know about you, I get things done just in time.
Yeah, so, oh, I don't, but, um, please, but, um, so the seventeenth is our next meeting. For our next meeting, looking at the agenda, what would be before the board, besides, we have already received the binders, we're going through the process to review them, we're gonna receive tonight an extension, not to be heard at this meeting, would be at the following meeting, so that way the other items on the letter would not be addressed at the nine seventeen, nine seventeen meeting.
You, you're probably not gonna have, I'm not sure you're gonna have that. I think it's gonna be a status update on the amended and restated.
So, the only thing on the seventeenth would be a status update on the-
The amended and restated.
Re- amended and restated from our town council.
Which is complement page?
Yeah.
I mean, if they could have a draft in advance of that.
Well, that would be part of the status update. If there's a draft, we can-
Right, that would be great. It's, it, it's not easy.
Status update, because it's either, if there's a draft, that would be part of a status update.
So, nothing else I can see would be on the agenda, because nothing else would be ready as of nights.
The binders are gonna be on the agenda.
The binder.
The binders will be done for the-
So binder-
I want Dean to take us through what's in the binder on, on that meeting.
And we want the cameras to be on.
That would be great.
There will be no votes during the nine seventeenth meeting on this topic. Dean will walk through in an informational meeting, the binders that we received from beginning to end.
Not addressing the items.
Not addressing the items and explaining what's in them. In no time will there be a vote on those items.
It's just to tell us what's in the binder, not a debate about the binder.
Can we add one more thing?
Until they come back for the final.
I need something to be added. We are looking for a review coming from M, from VHB on the site. That will be helpful. If they are looking for some more stuff or something, and the board, it would be good, vote to hear it also, and I want to hear it also. VHB is reviewing their plans right now. So, it would be good to have some input, or any changes which they are asking, the board can act on.
So if they could, do they have a deadline on what they're supposed to do, be completed with?
They started recently, so. Chris.
VHB, do they have a deadline?
No.
Do you know how soon they might get something to the board?
I, I think there's some contractual obligations that are being straightened out as we speak, and at this time, I do not have any deadline or updates for the-
VHB will have an update on that day, on where they're at in their review of the site, so we'll provide that as well. So, so far, binder review done by, not Ed, sorry, Dean. An update on where town council is, and hopefully they can provide us an amended or restated, and an update on where VHB is in the process.
And MHP, I'll provide an update on that.
Update on the MHP revised.
I think we should give a deadline to the town council to give you a preliminary thing.
Do you want me to put some deadlines on you?
Yep.
So, MHP update, I don't treat you any different than I treat anybody in this town.
What's the MHP update?
Now that you approved the change in the number of units, I'll have to be submit some information to them, so they can revise their commitment.
So MHP, you're gonna provide that update?
Yes.
Okay.
So MHP update's gonna be provided by Dean?
People from here to provide them.
I think just the conversation tomorrow, they're probably venting out for something for the vote.
Okay.
So you can make a copy of the vote?
That will be helpful for me to go to water department, sewer department, and MHP.
Okay, so-
Oh, that's the other thing we didn't talk about, the status of the sewer agreement.
He wants a photocopy.
And I'm not sure if you are involved with that or not.
He wants a photocopy.
Am I doing this, or should I do this?
When we're done.
When we're done.
Sewer capacity?
No, I'm not worried about that.
He's the managing member of the LSA.
Who?
The managing member. He's the managing-
You're the only member, right?
Yeah.
Managing and only.
Yeah.
He's the managing member.
Managing member.
Yep. Part of that binder will have the sewage, because you were, you're doing an updated review, right? Am I, am I losing?
No, no. Actually, they had to change the document for the sewer-
Yeah.
Agreement. I had to go for the sewer agreement, I had to change the water agreement, and MHP, I had to get the approval from MHP before eighteen, that's what I'll be working on.
So I think you can just say, status update on water and sewer agreements.
Yeah.
Provided by Dean.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm gonna put your name on those on the agenda posted.
Yeah.
People like that. Okay, all right.
How long do we need in order to work on the other two modification requests?
One of the two modification requests.
Four and five.
Um, it's dependent on him providing the information for us to, um, so the number of parking spaces identified, so this all references revised plans and attachments, sets of revised plans are not full site plans. When he provides four and five, which I'm guessing, will you be at a place at our next meeting to present it or give it to the board for an October meeting?
To be added to the binder.
Will you have that ready, or?
I would, if, I, we should, if I can sit down with Ed in the meantime, and go through the drawings, because we feel the drawings are, there might be some minor corrections that maybe, like, he would like to see on that landscape plan, the whole boundary, but-
Other than that, we've submitted the-
Other than that, we've submitted the, that references those two items.
So, four and five, number of parking spaces being reduced.
And that should be a simple decision.
Okay, and building elevation floor plan site as identified, so.
That specifically has to do with the hip roof.
Yeah.
And the, and the elevations, the facade is a little different than what was approved in the original permit. Those, why those are check, those were submitted.
But you should have the benefit of your peer reviewer on those. I don't, that's not my expertise.
Right. How long will that take for us, from today?
I think Chris needs to be able to check with VHB on the engineering peer review. It could be.
That sounds like two meetings out.
I'd say two meetings out, six days.
So, uh, October, when I date, date the extension to October thirty-first, that gives us time to have two meetings and.
And we want a treat, not a trick.
You're asking a little too many.
So, it's.
I want, I want you to take a floor off the building.
No, so.
There you go. Everything's getting delayed to, it's gonna be till.
October thirty-first.
October thirty. That way, we can handle it all.
We have to meet before that.
Four, four and five, October thirty-first. That will be on the agenda.
And the parking was in it, was just raised to make the num, what the number is now based on.
Again, but let's just take care of it at that October meeting.
So, we'll, we covered one to three today.
I did.
Which is great progress. Four to five.
That's fine.
Stop me, Doug.
Thank you.
You say this meeting will be October thirty-first?
All right.
Yeah, we were saying October thirty-first so that we have the month of October covered. We're not, the meetings likely will be before that, but we just want, in case something happens, we're covering the month of October.
Are these the one?
Yeah.
The cameras are moving around.
Huh?
They're moving around.
What was?
The camera.
All right.
Hey, just out of curiosity, this thing about the property management, you said, you know, it has to be, have you, in all the forty B projects, have you ever seen that change? Where, you know, like it says Peabody, you know, where that?
Yes.
You have?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it'll be something that.
But it has to be someone qualified.
Right, the MHP will be.
Yeah.
The board can make that condition that if we have a change in the management firm, we have to come back and provide the cause.
At least notify us.
Yeah, yeah. You can't approve it, but we can notify it.
All right. So, what is next meeting after the seventeenth of September?
I don't have a calendar.
Just tell me it's okay, because I don't wanna.
Twenty-second?
No, 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 no.
I wanna make sure.
Nineteenth, October is telling me that's a Monday.
And he asked you to get a copy.
So, how about the next meeting be October twenty-second? October twenty-second.
I'm gonna leave that to the meeting then.
So, the meeting was on the schedule for October fifteenth. Awesome, traveling. So, we are moving that meeting to October twenty-second, I can present.
Are you gonna be?
No, he's, he isn't going there. Um.
So, the October meeting's changing?
I have something to give you.
Um, okay. So, October twenty-second, that is when we will, as long as we have the information we need, that is when we will address number four and five at that meeting.
Are we having one in September two or is that?
Yes.
Seventeenth is the, is the binder.
Your binder.
Oh, my binder.
So, on the seventeenth, you have a binder review and you have quite a few things that you're gonna be doing. You can check our town website. You'll see your name. Um, you're gonna do the binder review. You're gonna give us an update on something.
So, what are you meeting at?
You're gonna give us an update on water and sewer. You're also gonna give us an update on MHP.
Yes.
And you're gonna do an end-to-end binder review for all members of my board but me, but trust me, I'll read it. And at this point in time, is there anything else that you wanna discuss?
Wanna add that accessory unit now?
Yes, yes.
Blew you out.
So, please should come to us.
Chris, do you have anything?
All right, so I have nothing else.
Let us do a journey.
Okay, I have a question before you adjourn. Could you clarify John Minehaw's, um, membership on the board or not? I heard that he resigned.
He has the letter of resignation that will take effect as soon as the selection delegate.
Oh, why did that not?
I have, I have not handed it to him yet. I was hoping to do so tonight.
Clarify. I did second the, uh, the motion.
Who motioned to post?
I do.
No, I have to make a copy of that.
And all the paper.
This is opposite.
And you'll post for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I always ask for discussion on that.
Can we have this meeting first?
No, because you're, I think we didn't go over that. I'm not sure, but you know, like people are very.
All right, let me call.
We walk.